Welcome, everyone, to the City Regular City Council Meeting for Tuesday, February 7th. Officially begin the meeting at 6:00 PM. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair, Stan Doob.
Here.
Councilmember Farnum.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Lozano.
Mayor Vandenberg.
Here. We will next have a silent prayer followed by this flag salute.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands here, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you read the replay statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays Friday, February 10th at 9:00 AM and Saturday, February 11th at 9:00 AM. This meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/MetroCable14.
Thank you. Next is agenda approvals, additions and/or deletions. Is there any requests by the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull the agenda F1.
So Mayor, may I suggest for that one, since it's a consent item?
Yep.
That item can be pulled when we get to the consent calendar. You want to lift it from consent for discussion?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor, yeah, that'd probably be the...
Thank you. Yeah, I was looking further past, didn't see it. Okay, so if that's the only item, then we'll move on to presentations. Are there any presentations?
None this evening.
Thank you. Next is public comment.
Under Government Section Code 54954.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Consistent with the City Council procedural guidelines, the mayor reserves the right to shorten the time limit for speakers to ensure the efficient and timely completion of all city business on the agenda. Due to the statewide emergency, public comments may also be submitted, as noted above, via the options listed on the first page of the agenda for providing live public comment or prior to the meeting via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting, which will be distributed to City Council, made part of the official minutes, and posted on the city's website prior to the meeting, but will not be read out loud.
Do we have any public comment?
The first one, Belinda Ellis.
Ma'am?
Thank you. I am the district manager of the Galt Arno Cemetery District, and I wanted to give you an update of the cemetery. We've saved a great deal of damage in the storms that we have currently had. We lost at the Galt Cemetery on Joy Drive, we lost over 20 trees. At the cemetery on Hicksville, we lost about 10. We've had a number of monuments that have been destroyed, been uprooted. We will be taking care of those as we can. Currently, right now, we can't get any, we're only getting equipment on the grounds to dig for the services that we have coming up. When the trees went up, went down, a great deal of our sprinkler system came up. In fact, all of it did. We currently have no water in the cemetery, which is a problem for me because I have a fondness to flushing toilets. And I don't like honeypots, but that's a whole 'nother story. We did have one grave exposed, which we were able to close right away. There were no bones or anything showing. We just, there was a portion of the casket, it was very old, from like 1950s, just pieces of wood. As soon as we were able to cut the tree off, the weight came down and it went down and we were able to secure that. We have many, many potholes in the cemetery, covering our roads, sinkholes. We've had a number of sunken graves. As we've taken our equipment out, we've collapsed the grave next to one that we're digging. The ground is very unstable at this time. I wanted to let you know and let everybody know, we're conducting all of our services in the veterans' area at this time. Unfortunately, families are not able to go to the graves, just for a matter of safety reasons. And I know that causes some problems and we're terribly sorry about that. We are trying to open up the cemetery as fast as we can. We were without power for a week. We were closed completely until January 26th. We're now operating on a modified schedule from Monday through Friday, 9 to 3. No weekends at this time. The gates are remaining closed to the public. On January 10th, the Board of Trustees for the Galt Arno Cemetery District declared a state of emergency in the cemetery. This has allowed us to seek what funds we can and try to get in there quickly. We have contacted our insurance company, but because it hit no structures, the insurance company will not cover anything, any of our losses. Thursday, I will begin the orientation and submitting process to FEMA. I would appreciate any help or if you know of any other places I should contact. As far as seeking funds, we would be grateful. I know the cemetery means a great deal to many people and we want to, we want to bring it back to what it was. So, I just wanted to give you an update on the cemetery.
Thank you, Belinda. Just, just so you know, we're not allowed by law to have a back-and-forth or a conversation. Brief comments is at best all that we can do at this time. But thank you so much for bringing awareness.
Thank you.
Josh Coellers.
Good evening, Mayor Vandenberg and distinguished council members. My name's Josh Coellers. I'm the current Galt Youth Commission Liaison to City Council. I wanted to show up after a long time of me not being here, just to give you an update of what we've been doing at the commission. Last night, we started by introducing our new City Council Representative, Mayor Vandenberg, as well as introducing our newest adult mentor, Jessica Gerzen. We then reviewed the minutes and approved them. And we discussed our partnering with the Commission on Aging when we distributed blankets to the care center in December. Talked about our experiences from then, what we learned. We then did a Treasury Report in which we discovered we have an abundance of funds and we have almost double what we had last year, which is pretty good. We discussed projects for the upcoming year. We have an ongoing animal service project that is being headed up by our chair and vice chair, and they present some updates on that, as well as a Random Acts of Kindness Week held by the Galt Youth Commission, in which we'll be outreach into the community through little events and little treats here and there. We then discussed the college scholarships that we give out and we finalized a budget and an amount of scholarships we're going to give out this year. And then, City Manager, Mr. Hines, was kind enough to take us through some pages of the Commission and Committee's handbook and we discussed our responsibility and our roles within the city. Mayor Vandenberg then gave us a City Council update and we discussed some future city events we wanted to participate in and some future agenda items, that chief of those being the commission application process for the upcoming year. So, thank you for your time. I just wanted to make sure I did my job and let you guys know what's going on.
Very well done. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, sir.
Misty Springmeyer.
Okay, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Misty Springmeyer and I'm the president of Lickety Split Softball. Our organization came to the council meeting on November 1st to address our inability to obtain adequate use of city-owned facilities. I recently emailed the council an update on my efforts and wanted to update you on the current situation. I did participate in a Zoom meeting today with the city manager and Director Solis, and they did apologize for the lack of communication and I do appreciate that apology. One of the most upsetting roadblocks has been the lack of consistency. We have been transparent with our numbers and needs and always responsive to the requests of the city. I have repeatedly told all parties of our January 27th start date and requested a set schedule by that date. We purposely chose this date as GYB closed their registration January 11th. This would allow ample time to have all numbers and potential schedules for all organizations. As of the last week in January, Parks and Recreation was still advising me they did not know GYB's numbers or their potential schedules. This is puzzling, as the council even cited, organizations know their potential schedules weeks, if not months, in advance. As stated in my email, GYB was also allowed to secure the entire complex every weekday in February, as of January 3rd. Why was one organization allowed to secure a schedule without providing accurate enrollment numbers and prior to the agreed-upon date that all parties made? I want to bring up the word necessary. Director Solis cited, in the current MOU between GYB and the city, it states that the city will provide necessary facilities for the GYB program. Who is defining the word necessary? My understanding is the city is allowing GYB to dictate what is necessary without any checks and balances. Are the fields even being efficiently used in a manner that would benefit the community as a whole? I want to briefly mention the GYB baseball numbers. While I don't believe these numbers should be in the equation, it is my understanding that this is part of the explanation for the monopoly of fields. It is my understanding that Galt Youth Baseball has 24 baseball teams. During the month of February, baseball has full use of Harvey, Meadowview, and Greer. They also have shared use of the backfields at McCaffrey, as well as our COE on select days. Director Solis has even informed me that they may be using Veterans Field for their youngest age group. I feel this is more than adequate space for baseball. For softball, it is my understanding that GYB has 13 teams. For February, GYB softball has access to all three complex fields and both complex batting cages, Monday through Thursday. Fridays are left unoccupied. They have the front field of McCaffrey on a few days and the backfields of McCaffrey and our COE on select days. I did the math, only using the fields that I know is solely dedicated to softball. I counted 34 one-and-a-half-hour practice slots in one week, given to GYB. And this, again, is not counting our COE or the backfields at McCaffrey, which I know may be shared with baseball. Lickety Split was given two slots a week, two slots at McCaffrey, a field that has no lights. We were asked to hold practice for six teams on a field twice a week that does not have lights, starting at 5:30. It gets dark at 5:45. One of the days is Monday, which is better than Friday. But again, we will be asking our athletes to play up to nine games a weekend and turn around and practice on Monday. After pointing this out to Director Solis, Monday, January 29th, he did agree to give us two spots in the community park batting cages. This past week, GYB has slowly been making fields available. They started by releasing Friday to our organization. As the council has pointed out back in November, Fridays are not practical for a travel softball team. If we're not traveling, we're likely playing four to nine games a weekend. Friday just isn't practical. Yesterday, Galt Youth Baseball released several one-hour blocks, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday, from 7:30 to 8:30. This is actually more time than I originally requested, but ironically, it's not during any of the timeframes I requested. Our request has been very realistic. A month ago, I asked for one field Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I have brainstormed a very realistic schedule that would accommodate all parties in the community and I would be happy to share it. So, here we are today. Our organization has 73 eager girls and families ready to represent this community. We have six teams ready to play and access to two fields. This past week, we started our practices and it was successful. We practiced maybe an hour to an hour and a half before it got dark and we shared teams on one field at our COE. It was a good week, but it is not sustainable. We are begging the council to step in and help come up with a realistic plan for the future. Thank you.
Is there any more public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My glass is broke, so now I have to...
Katie Scott.
Got to move this up a little bit. Good, good evening, council. My name's Katie Scott. I am a member of the board for Lickety Split Softball. We are a nonprofit, 100% volunteer-driven organization in the local community. So, please don't take my lack of eye contact and the ability to look at you as a lack of respect or passion for speaking to you, but I just don't want to leave anything out. So, I would like to read directly off of this. As Misty stated, we had hoped that we did not have to bring this back to council, but with the enormous letdown of communication and promises, here we are. We realize that not everybody lives and breathes softball and this may be a small future agenda item to some, but us three women and all of our coaches, when we're not at all our full-time jobs, we volunteer our time and dedication to these kids and it's an extremely large future agenda item for us. The city has had 98 days, 98 from our last meeting here, to rectify the situation and decided on day 97 and a half to finally reach out after the numerous attempts to communicate by our president. The statements made by the other board member has been focused on factual information, numbers, dates, meetings, et cetera. I'd like to take this time to go a little outside my character to introduce a tiny bit of emotion to these facts and to say that it's an insult to us and our families that we were given a last-minute deadline just yesterday to meet this afternoon and discuss this agenda item in a frantic way in order to pacify it somehow. Had the city reached out at any of the numerous attempts, we could have handled this and actually helped create a practice schedule that is of value to all the children in this community. Instead, what was originally presented was not just a business-as-usual approach, but an end result worse than before. All this in order to not create additional work for those parties involved? Nobody batted an eye at the disregard for our organization until we finally, in a panic, reached out to the council to help. It should never have come to this. We should never have had to come back here. I should never have had to call the mayor on the last Friday before the season started in a state of sheer panic because our organization was shown with the actions of the city, you don't matter. As stated, we have met every deadline. We've presented every piece of documentation requested in a timely manner. Others have done none of these. Because of that, who is punished? Not them, not the city, but our 73 kids and their families. Totalling that with their families and our children, that's hundreds of Galt citizens. Why does the lack of communication from all the other parties involved constitute an emergency in our organization? Where do we go from here? The last meeting, we left the last meeting with hope and positivity to our community members and families, only to be hit with even worse news from when we started. How do we leave here with faith that the right thing will be done when history proves that there is no faith? Do you realize that after the last meeting, we sat down with all of our kids and said, "Look at what you did. Look at what standing up for what you believe in means. Look at how you can make a difference." Sat them down and told them, "We're proud of you. Way to be here, way to show up for your city, way to show up for your organization." Sat them down and told them, "Just look at how being a leader feels." And then 87 days later, had to tell them at commitment night, "Sorry, guess it wasn't enough, but we'll keep fighting for you." We all agreed we were going to come here and state the facts and let them speak for themselves and to keep the emotions out of it, but guess what? This is emotional. The lesson that this is teaching our kids is so much more than a stupid practice field. We will practice in the street if we need to. Do you all realize that this has escalated so far past that? And these seven-year-old to 16-year-old kids see that? They see that they're being pushed out, singled out, just disregarded, not heard, not helped, not even considered. Give us McCaffrey for all six teams, two days a week, to practice for 30 minutes until it gets dark, but for crying out loud, at least show the kids how to do the right thing as leaders in the community. You may have come here tonight thinking, "Just give them a couple of fields and they'll be quiet." But I hope you leave here thinking outside of that box. I guess if one good thing has come from this situation, it's that it's taught the youth in our organization resilience, overcoming challenges, and getting up when you've been knocked down. So, I guess thank you for that and thanks for your time. So I guess thank you for that, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Katie.
Shannon Welch.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Shannon Welch, and I am the treasurer for American Made Baseball, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am aware that there was a meeting today at 3:00 PM and was informed of the conversation and plans for future field use. What I have originally prepared was before this meeting took place, but I still feel it important to share my concerns, considering very little action took place after our last meeting back in October. So I am puzzled as to why it is necessary for me to speak, considering Lickety Split's comments made at the November 1 meeting, the meetings with the city manager, G Y B, and the copious string of emails from both American Made and Lickety Split representatives. I am unsure as to why we need to continue to basically beg for our voices to be heard on behalf of children in this town over the same issue, which is simply access to the use of city fields. We understand the need for G Y B to have access to the fields as well as the needs of the Adult Softball League, due to the number of children and adults being serviced, naturally. I just don't understand why their needs are the only ones being recognized, considered, and serviced. This problem has persisted for the past two years at least. Last January 2022, my son's team practiced under the lights at the softball complex from 7:45 PM to 9:45 PM on school nights. He wasn't going to bed until after 10:00 PM on a school night. He was 11. To me, that's appalling. I allowed him to go against my better judgment, because if you don't practice, you don't play. And he was exhausted the following day each time. Our 10-year-old team and 9-year-old teams, respectively, had those same practice times last year, and here we are a year later, nearly in the same boat. My main concerns are these. Why are American Made Baseball and Lickety Split organizations being excluded from fair use of city facilities? Why are we, American Made Baseball, only be given Friday nights at the complex to practice when we specifically stated that what was best for the children was any day but Friday because our games are on weekends and the children need a day for their arm to rest before they should be back at it? I have a huge respect for recreational sports. My children have played all the ones that the city of Galt has to offer, and I've coached many of those teams myself. But I also have a respect for competitive sports. I once played recreational and competitive softball in the city of Galt many moons ago, and every practice and every game that was held in Galt was at the complex. A few years ago, my son, my oldest, played for the F C soccer competitive team. They used Walker Park for all of their Galt-based games and all of their practices. So it used to be fair, so just where has that fairness gone? When will this issue be properly addressed? What do the competitive sports organizations need to do in order to be recognized, heard, and treated with fairness when it comes to the facility's use in the city of Galt for all youth sports? Having heard that progress was made in today's meeting, I am hopeful, but my previous concerns still stand until an actual change is made. After all, actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Miguel Lawrence.
Hello, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am the president and founder of American Made Baseball, which is a nonprofit youth organization based here at a Galt. We were established in 2019. Today, we did have a meeting with the city manager, Armando, and the president of Lickety Split and myself. This meeting seemed to be a success and promising looking forward, yet I've had those same meetings before in the past, and here we are today. AM and Lickety Split are not getting the idea or fair amount of practice opportunities at the complex when G Y B is also inquiring practice times. After the city council meeting where G Y B attempted to propose a new M O U, we went to a new meeting with the city manager to try to work things out. This meeting seemed successful, yet it wasn't. I reached out to the city manager multiple times, as we were supposed to schedule another meeting by the end of January. Nothing was heard till yesterday. This organization that we have, we're trying to run it, and we have family members, kids, lives, and we're getting late notices from the city of Galt getting the numbers from G Y B. So last minute, we're telling our parents, "Hey, you have practice Tuesday and Friday," or even later than that sometimes. Another issue we're encountering is G Y B is reserving fields at the complex and then not showing up. So that's opportunities that we can be there. When G Y B, as you've heard in the previous statements, loosened up on some of their practice times, they only gave availability to Friday, and as a baseball travel team, it's required that the players rest their arm the day before a tournament, and our tournaments are held on the weekends. Simply, right now, a lot of G Y B practices are ending at 8:30. That's giving us 8:30 to 10 o'clock to practice with our players. We did take some Fridays, because that's the only option we were given, but unfortunately, some of our teams, you know, there's only three fields at the complex we can use, so they're having to practice 8:30 to 10 o'clock. We're trying to raise student athletes, and these kids can't be students practicing that late. All we're asking is, you know, fairness. I do appreciate the meeting we had today with the city mayor, and I hope that going forward with what we discussed will help us. I just want to bring this all to an attention to you guys and hope for the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Miguel.
I just have a question, just to clarify. Was there a third organization present at the meeting? G Y B? It was just the two?
Okay, thanks.
Greg Davidson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff. I'm happy to see so many parents here advocating on behalf of their children. I'm here to advocate on behalf of a population in Galt that has no voice, and that's the homeless, neglected, discarded, lost animals that we have. Since we were here the last time, our little colony that my wife and I take care of has grown by two more. We now have Warren Zevon and Gravy that we've added to a group of five that we were already feeding. We're happy to feed them and take care of them, make sure that they have any veterinary services that they need. But when we spoke before, we were told by Mr. Hines that we would have an update on the agenda of the city council meeting in either January or February about improved animal services. And now here we are in February. I was wondering if we could get an update on that, because it is a growing problem. I saw a chart the other day how one unfixed male and one unfixed female can turn into thousands of cats in the breeding cycles. Now with global warming, we now have four breeding cycles a year for cats, where we used to have three. Kittens are having kittens in our town. I saw, in the past week, I saw two animals laying, both of them, this is what troubles me the most, the animals had been hit by a car, and they were laying in the green areas that we have painted for our children to walk in, and there's no city service that will come out and clean up those animals. I've called and called and called about a dead animal in the street. It just shows the level of caring that we have as a city when we care for those that can't care for themselves. Obviously, the animals can. So I was hoping we could get an update on the agenda, maybe for the next city council meeting, on improved animal services in the city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Hines, do you have an update on that? Anything?
Crystal Rollins.
Greetings. My name is Crystal Rollins, and I am resident of Galt for the last nine years. I want to thank you for allowing me to be present and speaking with you today. I'm here today to briefly share some of the work that Galt P D has done surrounding Black History. Galt P D created a Black History Working Group about five years ago. This group is comprised of several community members, such as myself, who serves as a resource to the police department to bring awareness of Black culture to Galt and assist with bridging the gap in trust with the police department and the Black community. I have been a member of this group for four years to date, and I am currently the person who's been leading this group. I've been working with this group as a member, and I'm committed to the work in the city to strengthen the relationship between the Black community and law enforcement. Black History Month is about the shared experiences of all Black Americans who lived, who lives, who lives have shaped, challenged, and strengthened America. It isn't just about celebrating the legacy and lives of Black leaders as the fight continues daily. As Black people, we commit ourselves daily to the justice, equality, and civil rights. It's about the integrity, leadership, and determination. Galt P D, in conjunction with the city, will be hosting a coffee shop this month, and also will be honoring several people on their social media pages this month. It's important to note, even though the post will end at the end of the month, it is the hope, and my hope, that the city in Galt P D will continue to strive towards not only bridging the gap, but also creating a space for Black people in Galt to be heard throughout the year. It is also my hope and the hope of all that in the future years, the city of Galt will have programming, activities, and events that will be held during the month of February to celebrate Black culture and heritage. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening with you all. It's been a pleasure. And prior to me sitting down, I want to leave with you this quote from Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King. "If we work together, we can continue to make strides, great strides, to a better future." Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal.
Mr. Hines, I believe the online, somebody was telling me they can't hear anything online. There is no sound online, so can you check on the system?
Is there any more public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just double-checking.
Take your time, I just want to make sure.
Katrina Watson.
Good evening. Katrina Watson, Galt resident for 10 years plus. I think this is the third time I've spoken with you or come before you on the subject of animal control or the lack thereof. And tonight, I'm not just speaking for myself, but I believe for a number of other concerned citizens and local welfare groups. It's come to our attention that Sack County no longer have the contract to deal with stray animals, dogs, and cats, and that the Galt P D is now currently responsible in the interim until a contract is made with another body. About two weeks ago, I called to report two loose dogs, a German Shepherd and a pitbull. And that's, what, 10 days, two weeks ago? Those two dogs are still roaming the neighborhood, causing trouble. Nobody seems to have done anything about it. Nobody cares. Somebody's going to get hurt, or there another dog is going to get hurt, attacked, a child, the dogs themselves. It's also come to my attention that the stray population, the number of animals abandoned in the neighborhood in South Sacramento, the Galt Herald area, has greatly increased since Christmas. So there is an increasing need for something to be done to promote the welfare of the stray animals in this town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madison Delbrug.
Can I wait for the city manager to come back?
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't think he heard.
I think he's directly addressing her concerns, which we can't do by law, so... That is okay, yes?
Yeah, and if you want to have someone else while he's out.
If someone else liked to speak instead of her? Can we... Is there another public speaker?
We can wait. We can wait, it's not a...
Want me to go ahead, move on?
If someone else would like to speak, they may...
Well, they're in order, so the next one would be Mika Alvarez. Rachel Lopez. Galen Gomez. Okay.
I'm going to call a five-minute recess. I'd like to call the meeting back to order and continue public comment. Before you begin, Madison, I would like to say, you know, as far as the animal control, uh, with some clarification from legal, um, we are, we have been pushing for a new contract, it just hasn't been finalized, so we can't make public statements that we've done anything when it's not finished, but the ci, the city of Galt is in the same position as the citizens is in a, in a waiting position. We're not one in the position to dictate. So, please continue.
Please, mics. Um, I need to note that our timer's not working, so I'll be keeping track of it on my phone for all public comment.
All right, good evening, Mayor Vandenberg and Council. Uh, my name is Madison Delbrugue and I am the president of the Galt Chamber of Commerce. I want to start by thanking Councilmember Papino for directing, uh, the city manager to meet with the chamber regarding our Visit Galt Initiative and Visitor's Center. Uh, Bonnie Rodriguez, our chamber treasurer, and Frank Gialdo, our interim executive director, did meet with the city manager and unfortunately, it did not go very well. After our meeting, I received an email from Frank, um, that I could not ignore. I forwarded the letter to our entire board of directors and also wanted to share it with Dear President Madison, in all of my years working around public servants, I have never stepped into such an unprovoked, hostile meeting as I did today. From the moment you attempted to make your verbal presentation, City Manager Heinz vacillated between being dismissive, confrontational, patronizing, and even passively aggressive, passively aggressive threatening towards the chamber. I consider this to be totally bizarre and unacceptable behavior from someone with his vast education and experience. It was my personal impression that him pedantically regurgitating your college experience and then suggesting you treat him like a college professor was code for saying you are young, unseasoned, and that you are not worthy of serious consideration. I further interpreted his voice inflection and body language as unprofessional and rude. When Bonnie tried to politely interject historical facts into the discussion, she too was met with what I felt was the same disrespect and contempt. Bonnie is a highly respected news publisher and like you, is a highly accomplished business professional. Maybe he doesn't know that? Regardless, a city official shouldn't talk to anyone that, that way, regardless of how he might think. As you know, I have tried to meet with the city manager since January 4th. Him using the false excuse that he couldn't meet because of the weather was an insult to everyone's intelligence in the room. Via his assistant, he proposed and withdrew several dates in a manner that appeared to be with poor intentions. I wanted to give him the benefit of the doubt, but his insulting behavior today suggests it was all by design from the beginning. Mr. Heinz stated during the meeting that the ARPA money once earmarked for the business community has now been real, reallocated to help the community, but flat refused to explain exactly what that means. We have been told by inside sources his plan to build a skate park. I don't know if that is true, since he refuses to be forthright and transparent, but I suspect his plans are to redirect the money in a manner that was not intended by Congress. The fact that there are examples of other cities awarding chambers ARPA money seemed to be of no interest to him as it did not fit his administration's false narrative. His numerous repeating of, "I need a proposal," while simultaneously threatening to investigate the chamber and pool all of our 990s, reminded me of an educated, but recalcitrant child throwing a temper tantrum. Regardless of how the city chooses to move forward with the chamber, or with the business earmarked ARPA funds, I think it's important that their chamber have an internal discussion about today's meeting and then we formally alert the city council about the behavior of their leading city representative. Thanks again for giving me this honor and opportunity to assist the chamber. I'm sorry that what should have been a pleasant discussion built on mutual respect immediately turned into such an unnecessary and hostile meeting. It is my humble recommendation that ignoring this outlandish behavior would not be in the best interest of the business community or residents at large. Respectfully, Frank Gialdo. Thank you.
Thank you.
After much careful deliberation and upon my strong personal recommendation, the Galt District Chamber of Commerce had an emergency meeting tonight. The board took a vote and reached a unanimous decision that they have no confidence, that the city manager will operate in good faith when soliciting new or administering existing grant funds that are already earmarked for the business community. This is not an action that we take lightly, nor a position we want to be in. Numerous citizens have told me they find Mr. Heinz to be increasingly difficult to work with. I strongly suspect you must have received similar complaints. I now believe that what we have witnessed in our meeting with Mr. Heinz on January 24th was not an anomaly, but rather an accurate representation of Mr. Heinz's communication style. In stark contrast to the city manager, I have found each council member to be professional, respectful, polite, and accessible, something I appreciate and do not take for granted. So thank you for that. A quick Google search can confirm numerous chambers have received hundreds of thousands of dollars of ARPA funds. The chamber is offering solid destination marketing ideas that can benefit both the local government and the community as a whole. With the city's input, I'm sure these plans can be further improved. We remain eager to work with city council and city staff to improve Galt business profitability and increase business tax revenue for the city during this crucial past, or rather post-pandemic period. But as much as we believe in Galt having a visitor's center and partaking in next-level destination marketing, we are quite frankly unsure how to move forward under the current environment. When the chamber hired me, one of their specific instructions to me was to meet with the city manager. Tending Mr. Heinz down for a meeting took 20 days and was unnecessarily complicated. After the meeting that we finally had, I am at a loss as to how we can effectively work together. I have learned through a Public Records Act request that Mr. Heinz was seeking additional business grant money from Governor Newsom in January of 2021. Yet he is now trying to redirect tax dollars directly earmarked for business in 2023. I personally find that disconcerting. I am neither a Galt business owner nor a Galt resident, so I will take no offense if the council holds little weight in what I personally have to say. But President Madison is a third-generation real estate broker here. Her grandfather's name is on a street sign. Bonnie is the publisher of the Galt Herald. Prior to that, she worked as an editor for the amazing Dave Herberger. Bonnie has forgotten more about Galt than I have ever known. Please help me ensure that Galt business owners and residents are given the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Bonnie Rodriguez.
Well, unlike Maddie and Frank, I don't tend to write anything down because I try to read the room to see what message needs to be made. Um, I think both of them gave a very, uh, clear message of what we're dealing with, with the chamber. We spoke with each one of you before even going into this meeting. We were excited that, that council supported us. We went into this meeting thinking this is a great, this is a great project for the city and the chamber to get together to do. And we walked into a, a den of vipers. And unfortunately, no good came out of that meeting. And it sounds like there's other issues going on with this, within the city. I do not envy you, um, from our perspective and from outside of sitting up on that dais. It looks like you have an employee who has gone rogue. People are not being treated well, people are not getting, feeling like they're being heard, and that's reflecting unfortunately on you. As the chamber, we are so grateful that we know we have individual relationships with each of you. That gives us a little bit of peace, because we know that you guys can step up and do what's right. I don't know that others in the room have that. I, I'm gonna tell a quick story about four years ago, I was, well, five years ago, I was sitting in a planning, or a Parks and Rec meeting here in this room, and the room was filled. And I can't remember what the issue was, but each one of those people, there were about 15 people that caught up and spoke about what they wanted. After they all spoke, the chair at the time, and I can't remember who it was, said in his, when he was speaking about it, was, "Well, I know what the city manager wants, so I, so that's how I'm going to vote." And unfortunately, because I have little self-control when it comes to teaching people, I raise my hand immediately, they let me speak. And so I'm gonna say to you what I said to that chair. It does not matter what that man sitting in that chair wants. It does not unfortunately matter to what all of your staff members sitting outside of this room want. What matters is what you guys think is best, and if that's not what, you know, what we're proposing, fine, but I certainly hope that, and when Rich is here, all five of you, think it through and see the value in what we're doing regardless of what he wants or doesn't want. He made it very clear to us that he does not want this, I don't know why. We're still baffled as to why we were treated the way we were. If you get that answer, that would be great, let us know. We'll change whatever it is if it was our fault. But it is, we're hoping, and our ask today is that, that you four or five demand, no, you don't need to demand, tell your employee, make this work. And just because we know it was a question, and I don't know how much time I have left, I forgot to set my phone. Okay, thank you. Um, there was a question about legality. Well, I, five minutes on Google shows all of these chambers getting money all over the nation, all over the state. The Sacramento City gave one of their chambers $180,000. One Google search, and I'm just gonna read this first paragraph in this, and I, I really want you to listen to this. On Tuesday, August 30th, the U.S. Secretary of Commerce, the U.S. Secretary of Commerce, Gina, and I'm gonna butcher her name, Ramondo, announced that the Department's Economic Development Administration is awarding a $1.6 million grant to Celine County, Missouri, on top of their other ARPA fund, by the way, to support tourism by building a new visitor's center. This grant was fully funded by ARPA. There are many other examples specific to visitor centers, many examples of, specific to chambers, just to rebuild their chamber. It's legal, it's been done, the U.S. Secretary of Commerce herself has done it. At this point, there should be no question, you guys support it, it's just a matter of how we execute it from here. You can tell your employees, this is what, this is how it's gonna be. Thanks.
To, to those three previous comments, I'll, I'll simply say this will be addressed.
Rochelle Kopp.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Rochelle Kopp and I'm on the Executive Board of the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for having us today. President Maddie is handing out our rough draft proposal that we were unable to present to Mr. Heinz last week. This is a, um, Visit Galt initiative, and we are so excited for this. I hope that you take two things from this meeting tonight. Um, I agree with my colleagues and the rest of our chamber board, and I do hope that you seriously consider, um, making sure that the issues and how things are communicated and how the community is talked to by the city manager is addressed and taken care of, one. And two, I hope that you get a chance to dive in and think about what this Visit Galt initiative could actually become for not just our business community, but our community at whole. Couple months ago, the chamber was sitting there and we knew that the city of Galt businesses specifically got $1.3 million, and they were handing it out to grants, and there's about a half a million dollars left, and there was questions as to what that money should go to. So we started brainstorming and thinking about what could that money do for the community. The chamber thought it was so important that we went out and hired an intern, um, director to help us achieve this, make contact with the city, with council, um, to make this dream a reality. What we're talking about is a visitor's center. We actually had the opportunity to meet with some state, local, and congressional representatives. One of the meetings we had was with Congresswoman Matsui's, um, office, two of their staffers, VJ Chu and Aaron Latta. When we told VJ that Galt did not have a visitor's center, his jaw dropped. And why do you guys not have a visitor's center? And we are right in the heart of our, um, old-town Galt, and it just sparked this conversation with them. We let them know a little bit about our plans and what we were hoping to pitch to you guys, and we were met with so much support and encouragement for us to go full force with this. And in addition to us hoping to get these, um, additional ARPA fund monies, we're also supported with other avenues in which we could get support from the state to make this happen. We're hoping to bring in a Visit Galt somewhere downtown. Not only would a visitor's center here in town help support businesses, it would help -- promote tourism and bring traffic to the community. All ships rise together. So this isn't just benefiting all of the local businesses here in town, but this is also benefiting our, our city as a whole. With more push towards tourism and different media approaches outside of the city of Galt, this can help potentially bring in other businesses that maybe we have not got an opportunity to bring here into Galt. We're talking about a visitor's center that could be open seven days a week to serving the public, that has information promoting all of our awesome venues, all of our businesses, every place that you could eat, stay, dine, drink, to bring in more people. These awesome softball teams that bring in more people outside of our community, they're going to have a place to see what, besides the softball fields, are here in Galt. This is for everybody. This does help business, but this does help our community as well. The more foot traffic that we get into Galt, the more money that we have for taxes that would go to help fund Measure Q and Measure R. Those are funding for our local PD that helps them do great projects with the community like I just heard somebody talk about. It also helps with Parks and Rec. They need funding too. It's been clear that they need money. This is all around a win-win for our community. I want again to tell you that this is a proposal. We were open to suggestion. Our ask is that we can collaborate with you guys, and we could continue and make this dream a reality here for our community. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mika Alvarez. I'm the varsity softball coach from Galt High School. I'm also a volunteer coach for Lickety Split. I have been using the softball complex as an athlete when I was at Galt High School, and then now as a coach. And unfortunately, the situation continues to deteriorate, and it's become ever more frustrating. We, as, I'm just speaking for my team from the high school, have been given instructions on how we need to maintain the fields. And it's in order to transition more smoothly for the teams following us to then use the fields. I have been told not to speak directly with the city, that instead I should go through my athletic director, who can then speak to the city. I've pointed out issues of safety concerns on the field, which I was then told weren't that bad, and it was going to be fine. This week, specifically yesterday, the fields were drug, and large chunks of dirt and mud are all over home plate on Diamond One specifically. And mind you, the week before, we were told that we needed to move the pads over the batter's boxes so that we didn't cause more work to be required on the fields. Today, we left the fields in better shape than what we walked in on because that's what we do anyway. That's what we make our best effort to do, that's what we have our athletes do. And it's really unfortunate, the complete breakdown in communication between the high school and the city. It's been a long-running relationship. The high school's been using the complex for over 30 years. And to require more maintenance when we're offered less time to practice is really tough. Most of you know the high schools are now getting out of school at 3:30 in the afternoon. Normally, that's when we would start practice. I asked initially to be able to use the fields from 4:00 to 6:00. I was told, no, we have to still be gone by 5:30. The compromise was that we could use the batting cages for the last 30 minutes of practice. I'm not sure how many of you are familiar with how batting practice goes, but two batting cages with 30 athletes is impossible to accomplish in 30 minutes. I was literally voted Coach of the Year last year for our league. I cannot make that work. So going into this season, I was really hopeful that I was going to be able to work really well with Lickety Split. Our JV softball coach is also a volunteer coach with Lickety Split. So we had high hopes that it was going to be seamless transitioning where we were literally going to finish our jobs coaching as high school coaches, transition right into our volunteer coaching positions, being at the complex. And yet, it's been, as you've already heard in multiple meetings now, completely frustrating. I don't understand why one organization is getting to dictate what's happening. I'm not here to represent the school district, I'm only representing myself as a coach. You also know Liberty Ranch plays at the complex as well. And college sports, softball is actually the fastest growing sport in college sports. So NCAA, it's making the most money out of all the sports that are, I mean, for female sports, they're the fastest growing. I'm sorry, I'm tripping over my words, I'm really frustrated. So behind football, behind basketball, you then have softball. Making an investment in the girls in our community pays off for them in the long run. And right now, giving them the short end of the stick and repeatedly telling them that, well, you just have to make it work, you just have to make it out with what's due, is really frustrating. And it's hard every day to look at them and tell them, we're doing the best we can. And I've told them multiple times, just this, and this is literally our second week, I said, I'm sorry, you're not seeing me at my best, but I'm doing what I can to try to help us through this situation. And I really hope that we can get some support to make it, make the complex useful to all of us. As far as it goes from volunteering as a coach, we travel all the time. We're gone every weekend. We are spending most of our weekends at the same organization, at the same complexes repeatedly. It's really unfortunate how few competitions are held here in Galt. Because if you need money for Parks and Recreation, you should probably help use those facilities to help make them better. So.
Mika, that's your five minutes, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mika.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Lopez, and I've been a resident of Galt for four years now. I'm not totally prepared as some here tonight. I was just made aware of this meeting about 20 minutes before it started, so I just have a quick, a little blurb to read to you guys. I have two boys who play baseball in this town. My six-year-old will be playing for GYB for the second time this upcoming season, and is very excited to be out on the field like his big brother. My oldest son started off playing in GYB right after COVID and was picked up as an All-Star. After that, he joined a local travel ball team, American-made baseball. We travel up and down California, representing this little town that we love. Our boys are on a winning streak right now, a hot one, currently 26-0. We practice two to three times a week here in Galt year-round, with the exception around the holidays. And it's been my experience over the last two years that when this time of year comes around, our boys come second to the city, to GYB practices. We were notified last week that since GYB has started up again, and their practices come first, our boys now have to practice from 8:00 to 10:00 p.m. on school nights. My kid is nine years old. There's no reason for him to be out playing baseball at 10 o'clock at night, because that's the only available time that we're given. We are also forced, forced to travel to Stockton to hold practices as well, just to get in a little bit earlier. I understand GYB has been around for a long time, but now our town has three organizations that are fighting for these fields. While I fully support GYB, and, you know, my kid plays on it, all the kids, all the kids in this town need the fields to play on. I'm asking for some consideration of our boys on American-made. Our 10-year-olds should not be felt, or any of them, we have eights, tens, elevens, and twelves, should not be felt second to this town that they call home. We have to fight really hard for our field times around Galt, all because we aren't part of the GYB organization. I'm not asking to be given anything more or made a priority. What I'm asking for as a mom is that it's fair for all the kids in this town. They're out there on that field, putting in work, staying out of trouble. Please consider making these fields around town more accessible to all of our kids in this town, and not more accessible to just one organization over the other. At the end of the day, all we are asking for is that it be fair, and not dread trying to find practices outside of Galt this time of year. Thank you.
Thank you, Rochelle.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and City Council, thank you for having me here to speak, allowing me the time to speak. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but as I'm hearing from multiple community members and community organizations, it's very clear you have a problem here. And how that problem is addressed is really up to you. Leadership really is determined by your actions when you do recognize there's a problem in what you do with that. I have to say, first of all, as a teacher, I'm absolutely appalled to hear that my students are practicing baseball until 10:00 p.m. at night. That's wrong. I want my kids in bed, and every single one of those kids are my kids, I want those kids in bed so they are ready to learn when they come to school the next day. So if there clearly seems to be a problem of fairness in this town regarding the organizations that are serving our youth in terms of baseball and softball, that needs to be fixed. No nine, 10, 11-year-old should be playing baseball at 10 o'clock at night on a school The other thing that I want, what I really came here to talk about, well, I didn't come to talk, like I said, I didn't come to speak this evening, but what I really do want to say is that I was also told that in January, February, we would have animal services as an agenda item. And so I'm looking forward to seeing that as an agenda item. And I heard what you said, Mr. Mayor, as far as it's in negotiation and you can't comment to that. It's not very hard, though, to put it on the agenda and say, hey, we're still working on it. We're still working on it. One of the things that I've noticed as a common thread through what I've heard here tonight, a total lack of communication and transparency with the city, this city's leadership, a bunch of last-minute pacifying to get people to be quiet, a total lack in faith, in faith in our leadership. I've heard it through all of the comments that have been made tonight. That's not just our city manager. When, when people are talking about having a lack in leadership, that's you. I have to say, the other thing that I've also experienced, which I've, I've heard here tonight, is dismissiveness, lack of availability, putting off, so, oh, let me defer that to somebody else, somebody else will call you and talk to you about that. Let's have some action. Let's, let's know what's going on. Let's be a little more transparent so your citizens can have faith, not only in our city management, but also in our city council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So to the previous speaker, they mentioned that they were told not to speak to the city. I want everyone to know that any citizen can speak to, directly to the city, council, and staff at any time. There's absolutely no restrictions, and we will address the baseball problem as well. It flat out obviously needs to be done as soon as possible.
No more public comment.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we move to reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Nothing to report tonight.
Mr. Pompano.
I don't have anything to report.
Councilman Farmer.
Nothing to report.
Looks like I'm the only one that's busy. I had to consume this groundwater authority meeting. Budgeting was the primary item. There was a strong consensus for funding levels with a reasonable expectation of grant funding. This will cover staff costs and allow groundwater authority to start cash-flowing projects. We will see how the consultant comes back for the need of fee structures, but as far as Galt's concerned, it should not be a big surprise. In fact, staff has already pre-considered the necessary funds in the, ahead of time. I also joined the Commission on Aging. Andrea Johnson is now the Chair of the Commission on Aging. Budget items were touched on. I gave some clarification on Measure Q and how it actually stands by law, not necessarily proclamation for funding or usage. There were also some discussion about advocacy again, and I also gave some clarification, or we just, you know, made sure they understood that it's a little different than the Youth Commission advocacy. At the LAFCO meeting, they set the table for the year with the new chair and co-chair. They also reviewed AB 2449, which is, gives a little bit of leeway for online meeting use, but you have to set up basically a satellite meeting station, so it's not very practical. And then last night, I had the Youth Commission. We did a spy versus spy at Escape Room, that was quite fun. They talked, well, you know, I won't go any farther than Josh did earlier, he did quite a fine job, so I'll just leave it at that. So next is information and consent calendar. It is recommended that items I, 1 through 4, be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion and/or action is requested by this council members. I believe Vice Mayor, you had one to remove one?
Mr. Mayor, I do not want to pull the agenda item, I just need the information. On this, on the warrant, Mr. Heinz, you can give the answer, or he, Mr. Boe will be here.
What warrants? Are you talking about the warrants from this agenda or from the prior agenda?
I think there was some warrant, it's prior, three weeks ago.
Oh, sure.
And I believe, I think you guys don't get back to me.
Yeah, and we apologize for that. However, we have your answers right now, if you'd like them.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So Mayor and members, Vice Mayor Sandu sent us a list of questions regarding warrants from the prior agenda. And so Vice Mayor, I'm going to start with warrant 224529 was for $149.66. That payment was to consolidate electrical distributors to replace fuses for new motors installed at City Hall. The next warrant is 224566. That was payment to the Lou Edwards Group, and these were the folks that we consulted with and to help us work on the campaign for Measure Q. The next, the next warrant, 224593, was a payment to, and that payment was of 3,000. And my apologies, Vice Mayor, that last warrant, ending in 566, was for 6,000. So the next warrant, 224593, for 3,000, was paid to Cole Pro Media or for transparency engagement. This is a firm that the PD and the city contracts with to help us with public relations, press releases, press relations. So there's that. The next warrant is warrant 224566. This was payment to the Lou Edwards Group of $6,000. Again, that was for community engagement for Measure Q. And then the last, the next warrant, payment 224, or warrant 224593, was also for the Cole Pro Media. And then the last warrant that we have listed from, from you, Vice Mayor, is warrant 224676, payment to Townsend Public Affairs for 6,000. And this was the lobbyist that we had contracted with in case Measure Q passed, and the county's measure passed as well. And basically would have put us in a situation where we would have had to, how should I say, negotiate with the county for that extra half cent. And so we were ready to have a lobbyist onboard who was ready to sort of intercede on our behalf. Luckily, the county's measure failed, so we no longer have that issue.
Or we still paying?
We still have to pay for that service. We still have to pay for that service because he did give us scenarios, and he did give us consultation, and we were ready for the fight in the event that it occurred.
Thank you.
Sure.
And there's a couple more. I don't know, the 224-836?
Is this from this agenda?
Yeah, on the first page.
First page. 224, what, can you give me the last three numbers?
36.
224?
224-836.
836. Okay. And Finance Director Matt Boring is here with me as well. And looks like that is for 826? Or 36?
36.
Yes. Okay, that's for GHD Inc. And Matthew, any?
That's related to the Corrigan Boulevard traffic calming work that they're assisting with?
You're talking the HDL?
That's for GHD.
Yeah, GHD, right. So what service they did?
They're working on Corrigan Boulevard traffic calming.
Okay, thank you. They currently, they're working on that, right?
Yes. And Vice Mayor, if you'd like, I can always have Public Works Director Mike Selling come in, and he can give you the details as well, if you'd like.
I think not, that's fine.
Okay.
That's fine. I just need the information of where we're using these funds. The other one, 224-840?
840, Hub International?
Hub International.
Give us just a second, Vice Mayor.
It looks like that's for an insurance payment for an event that was held by a third party at the city. It was an insurance payment that we transmitted for an event that was held on city property by a third party.
Which event you're talking about?
The actual event, I'm not sure of the actual event.
All right.
Do more research. I don't have that on.
Yeah, just get back to me. That's okay. I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the information, Mr. Hein.
And our apologies for the delay.
If there's nothing else, I will be looking for a motion to receive the filed warrants for a period ending January 20, 2023, the minutes for the regular meeting of January 17, 2023, Amendment Number 3 to Task Order Number 2 with REY Engineering for Improvement Plan Review Services and for Simmerhorn Ranch Phase 1, award a contract for materials in this installation of roof over Sludge Pad Project SEEP CHIP 521J.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Farmer.
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes for zero? Or is it abstained? Next is scheduled matters of public hearing. Subject, Introduce an Ordinance Adding Chapter 18.70 Urban Split Lot and 18.72 Two-Unit Projects to the Galt Municipal Code Exempt from SEQA Under California Public Resource Code 568252.21-J and 66411.7 Subpart N. Agenda Report from Mr. Hoffman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The state has recently adopted new standards that would allow for single-family residential zones to be split roughly in half, residential parcels, as well as allow in any single-family residential zone, parcels to be developed with up to two homes on those sites. The City of Galt currently does not have a local ordinance governing lot splits or two-unit housing development projects consistent with Senate Bill 9 within the city. And not having a local ordinance means that the creation of any such lot splits or two-unit projects in the city is now governed by the state's default standards. SB 9 does allow cities to impose different objective zoning subdivision or design standards. Those could include height limits on buildings, setbacks, whether that be front, side, rear yard setbacks, lot width, as well as lot coverage. So tonight, if the city council does not adopt the proposed ordinance, then the city will be limited to applying the municipal code's existing development standards, which were not necessarily drafted to anticipate these type of lot split and two-unit projects. Lot splits under the SB 9 standards, they could impact the character of existing neighborhoods. And for these reasons, staff recommends the council adopt the attached SB 9 ordinance and related project applications, indeed restrictions. This council has been seeing a lot of ordinances coming from planning recently, whether it be accessory dwelling unit ordinances, our fire code that we've recently adopted, our building codes that we've recently adopted. And what you're starting to see from the state, a lot of guidelines, a lot of laws, and the city never has to adopt something like this. We have the ability to give up complete local control, and the state would love that. But staff's going to keep on bringing these ordinances back to the council because we need to fight for everything we can get, and I don't think I'm quite ready to give up the design of this community back to the state. So I'm asking for a little bit of help from this council tonight to adopt another ordinance that helps us maintain as much local control as we possibly can get.
Thank you, sir. With that, I would open the public hearing and receive comments. Is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any council comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask.
Go ahead, sir.
So, Mr. Hoffman, looking through the staff report, so basically, just to understand in layman's terms, this policy from SB 9 has been, it's in effect. We don't really have anything on municipal code that really governs it.
Correct.
And so by default, should people want to do these and take advantage of SB 9, we're going to be forced to follow whatever direction comes from the state.
Correct.
So with that being said, and one of them was really alarming to me, it said that basically, correct me if I'm wrong, someone could split their lot into two, minimum of 1,200 square foot, and then they could then, again, take that, they could actually, they could actually take one lot, split it in two, and then if the square footage allowed for, they could split those lots again into four. So you could essentially end up with four lots on one.
It would just be the two. They're allowed to do one of two things. They're allowed to either put two houses on a lot, or they're allowed to subdivide it. But if they took that lot and created two parcels, they couldn't subdivide it again.
Okay. All right. So would that be?
That would be terrifying and...
Well, that's why I'm asking.
I wouldn't be shocked in the future if the state goes that way, but...
So just, just brief overview, what is it that, like, the specifics, without getting into the weeds on it, that we're going to put in our municipal?
Councilman Farmer?
I just want to jump in to clarify, just, although they can't get split into lots and then further subdivide it, they can split in two lots and then put two houses on those split lots, so it'll feel like a four lot turned into...
It'd be four structures.
Or structures that were, used to be just one.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Now, it might be tough because they create such a small parcel that by lot coverage and setbacks, which our ordinance would require?
Yeah.
You couldn't do that, and that's a big concern I have with our existing neighborhoods. What's the massing start looking like? What's the density start looking like? What's the setbacks start looking like?
What do the public complaints start looking like? So I just was asking, just on behalf of the council and maybe the public that are listening, just broad strokes, what is it that we're putting in our municipal code to regulate what we want that's different than what the state would allow?
What this ordinance is going to do is give us an ability to regulate a lot of the aesthetics, a lot of what this thing feels like within an existing neighborhood. You may have to allow the lot split, but we could say what that lot split looks like. What's the width of that lot that's created? What maybe is the depth of that lot that's created? What's the setback for the structure that goes there? What's the size of the home that could be built there? And so we don't have a lot of latitude that comes from the state, but what we do is making sure that we're controlling the aesthetics and what that neighborhood is going to look like. Because what we're talking about is taking an existing neighborhood, and it's something that this council is directed. Be respectful of what an existing neighborhood does look like. Don't do something that's out of character. And I'm concerned that what the state's doing is something that's out of character.
Yeah, and this is, this is not ADUs or something. This is a whole different... So my last question, Craig, is just to, I think I said in the staff report, but this came to planning. Planning Commission unanimously said, we agree with this stuff in the municipal code that we're being asked to approve tonight. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And it's direction that's come from this council and it's direction that I'm getting from the Planning Commission. If there are new regulations that are coming down from the state, and we have an ability to eke out any local control, we're going to keep doing that.
All right. Thank you, Craig.
Anybody else?
Just for the clarification, you know, Mr. Hoffman, the state make that, you know, they also have some guideline, they also have some restriction, right? And the reason we're doing that, I'm just asking you for the public, because we're putting more restriction, right, due to, because we want to be quality of life, the current residents there here in this town. That's the basic we're doing, right?
We're doing what we're allowed to do under the state guidelines. We are allowed to decide aesthetically and from a massing and from a feel what our community could look like, and we're going as far as we possibly can to control that. So are we doing something here that benefits the citizens of Galt? Absolutely, we are. And we're going to go as far as we possibly can, still meet the requirements of the state, but we are going to fight for as much local control as we can.
Thank you. And that's all.
Thank you, sir. So just kind of a clarification, you know, Mayor, Councilman Farmer brought up a good point, but for the average citizen, it might put in mind that a normal house lot would be, you know, potentially split, and that's not really likely. I mean, the lot would have to be a fairly large size in the first place, and with the setbacks that are written into the code, this kind of restricts, so even though it allows someone to do this to their land, it's still, that's the goal of restricting the setbacks and everything, of keeping the aesthetics plain and simple. It's not like I could take my small lot and squeeze two more homes into it, right?
I think the average lot, like in your neighborhood, they're not getting subdivided. The house is the lot. What we're talking about is some of the older neighborhoods in town, maybe some of those lots that back up to an alley that, you know, are kind of a little bit narrower, maybe longer, some of these larger lots that are like 10,000 square feet. We don't have a lot of them in town, but we are looking to provide guidelines that at least respect the existing neighborhood and provide some discretion on what that finished lot looks like and what the structures look like that go on it.
Right. So like on some of the older lots, like you mentioned, they have a garage in the far back up against alley. Perhaps that could be converted or restructured into a tiny home.
Sure.
But it wouldn't be a two-story apartment?
Correct.
Going in. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Craig, one more follow-up question with that. So what is the minimum, is there a minimum with SB 9 that was a minimum size the lot has to be?
1,200 square feet.
So the minimum, so a 1,200 square foot lot, no, I mean, you have to split it into 1,200 square foot lots, right?
One of the lots would have to be 1,200.
Right. So if I have a, I mean, my lot's like 6,500, which is, I guess, probably pretty average for Galt. So that would totally qualify for a lot split under SB 9. If the house was, say, let's say the existing structure was on, was positioned in such a way to leave 1,200 open and have setbacks, right?
Correct. And there aren't a lot of lots that look like that within town.
But you're right, though. In Old Town, there is. You have, like, for example, between Fifth and Fourth, you have, like, all those lots that are long. They're like 100, they're like 100 feet long, right?
Absolutely.
They're narrow, but they're really long, and you have a lot of those that have extensive back area.
On Palin, on Oak.
Yeah. Right. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just add, I think there's a, it's important to note that there's an owner occupancy requirement, so it can't just be, in theory, it can't be somebody that doesn't live there that would be doing the subdivision. It has to be somebody that lives there and has skin in the game, so to speak.
It takes out the speculation that you're just turning these lots into pure rental.
So if I had a home and I rented, I can't split it and rent double. I have to live on the lot.
Correct.
Thank you.
But I can live on the lot and, I can live on the lot and rent two other additional, say, if I was able to do that. Doesn't have to be like my, I know we're getting into the weeds here, but I'm just trying to understand this thing. So like, say that someone had a 10,000 square foot lot, and they were able to split it into four pieces. Thanks for turning the mic on. Whoever did that, that was crazy. Essentially, if I was able to have, end up with three structures on there, I could live in one and rent the other two out. It doesn't have to be like all my own, right? Okay. Yeah.
Okay. If there's no other questions, I would be looking for a motion to accept the ordinance as I read before. Do I have to read the whole part, the subject line?
Yes, please. Unless, if we don't do that, then we have to read the whole ordinance itself, so I'd rather read the title.
Here I go. Introduce an ordinance adding Chapter 18.70 Urban Lot Split and 18.72 Two-Unit Projects to the Galt Municipal Code Exempt from SEQA Under California Public Resource Code Section 6582852-21 Subsection J and 66411.7 Subsection N. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, before, did you, did we close the public comment or is it still open?
It is not closed. I did ask for public comment, and there was none, but I have not closed the public hearing.
Can we do a motion with public, we have to close it?
Public hearing is now closed. Thank you, sir.
So moved on the motion.
Moved by Councilman Farmer?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Sandu. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, council members.
Thank you, sir. Now on to regular calendar, Treasury Office, subject Treasury Report, period ending December 2022, agenda report by Mr. Farrell.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I always provide an economic report, and we have a, you know, certainly a distinguished realtor in the room, as far as Maddy is concerned, and I'm sure she can validate these numbers. So in December of 2022, the City of Galt had sold 27 units, okay, homes. The median price was $500,000, okay? And that was about 1,800 square feet. Compared to a year prior, December 2021, there were 41 units sold, and the median price there was 565,000. So you can certainly see that the price is coming down in Galt. One reason, interest rates are rising, okay? And speaking of that, you know, Chairman Powell of the Federal Reserve, he raised the interest rate, the Fed rate, 25 basis points last week, and I suspect, and markets are kind of pricing this in already, in March, he'll probably raise it another 25, and in May, probably an additional 25. I think that might be it for a while. Basically, they got to measure, you know, what the inflation rate is during that time and also what the unemployment rate is. They're trying to, believe it or not, they're trying to increase the unemployment rate. So that way, to try to keep the inflation down, okay? So here in Galt, speaking of unemployment, the, according to EDD, the unemployment rate here in Galt for preliminary for December 22 was 5.4%. In the county of Sacramento, the unemployment rate, according to EDD, was 3.6%. So we have a little bit... So we have a little bit higher percentage of unemployment here in town, according to EDD. So with that, I'll get to the Treasurers' Report. And honestly, I really don't have a lot to say tonight. We always talk about investing locally and I just want to make sure that everyone in the audience understands that as a city, right now, or I should say is December, we have $8.3 million invested in our local banks and specifically Farmers and Merchants Bank. The idea is for them, of course, to turn it around, and they do. They make loans out to places here in Galt, both people and businesses, and that the way we, you know, keep that money churnin' here locally. So we do have $8.3 million invested with them. Our investments range anywhere from, say, .38 all the way up to 3.65. During December, we had a weighted mature, weighted interest rate of 2.45%. So in this world, that's, you know, that's pretty good. I will say, I'll end this by saying, in the first, the first six months or the first half of the fiscal year has been completed, the city earned just slightly less of $600,000 in interest, so about $588,000. So, you know, if you just multiply that by two, you're probably looking somewhere around $1.2 million in interest for the city for this fiscal year that we're in. So that's what we're looking at. With that, I'll ask, I'll address any questions, but I ask for your approval.
Sean, thank you. I always look forward to your reports.
Thank you.
I like how you give like a common spin on it, you know, stuff we can understand. People understand homes and their investments in their homes, so I appreciate that. I just wanted to make a mention, I think it's funny that we, when I say government, I mean, large government that's in control of inflation, you know, tries to make policies to control inflation. So we're obviously trying to raise unemployment because that's an indicator of getting a handle on inflation.
Right.
But yet, the media always brags about, oh, but, you know, here's the bad news, but unemployment's so low, that's good news. But yet, we're really trying to raise it. So it's just kind of contradictory information, it seems. But anyways, thank you again, Sean.
Sure.
Any other councilmembers?
Sure.
Is there any public comment on this?
No public comment.
With that, we will accept, accept Treasury Report and thank you for it, sir. It's always reliable. The next item is City Manager's Office, subject discussion on consideration for resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt.
We need a motion.
Yeah.
I thought I asked you about that and.
Yeah, we get to a formal motion.
Always.
Okay. That's okay. That's okay. Okay, so with that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Treasury's Report.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Papino, seconded by Councilman Farmer. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Okay, so now to City Manager's Office, subject discussion and consideration of resolution establishing a temporary development impact fee deferral program for non-residential projects. Agenda report by Mr. Hines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez, will be providing the report. And just to let everyone know, this is our discussion and consideration of a resolution establishing temporary impact, temporary development impact fee deferral program for non-residential projects. And I'll turn it over to Economic Development Manager, Amy Mendez.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Amy Mendez, Economic Development Manager. I am here this evening to present an item on a proposed temporary development impact fee deferral program. As many of you know, one of the goals of the 2021-2023 City Council adopted strategic plan is to pursue economic development opportunities to attract and retain industrial and retail users that enhance the quality of life for Galt residents. One of the specific strategic tasks associated with that goal is to develop incentive and resource programs to enhance business attraction and expansion efforts in Galt. And so that's precisely what we are proposing here this evening. We've had various incentive programs that we've developed over the years for commercial and for residential purposes. We've had the sewer credit program, which was a sewer fee reduction for retail and industrial users for job creation and to attract the types of retailers and restaurants that we were looking for in Galt. We also adopted the traffic and park fee reduction for residential purposes. And so this is really kind of one more tool in our toolbox that we're trying to add to a system of the businesses that are looking to locate here in the community. One of the recurring concerns from businesses and developers that we've heard over and over again has to do with the upfront financial commitment associated with the development impact fees. And Galt requires the payment of various development impact fees and capacity fees to ensure that new development pays the capital costs associated with growth. This is typical of the majority of cities throughout California. Typically, these fees are paid at the time the building permit application is submitted and before any construction begins. And so it's a substantial upfront cost in the form of fees that these typically developers or businesses are having to pay before they start construction. And so depending on the building project size or the building size, these fees can range from tens of thousands of dollars to millions of dollars per project. And so this is a resource that we're hoping to provide to the businesses to defer the costs, not waive them, not reduce them, but defer them over a set period of time. And I apologize, this is pretty small, but this is an example of a fee estimate that we provided recently for an industrial user. So this is a 14,800 square foot industrial building valued at $3.8 million. We use the valuation to determine certain fees. We also use acreage and square footage of building to determine mostly the impact fees. And so this is just a, you know, kind of an example of a recent fee estimate that we had provided to a developer. Actually, this is for a business that's looking to expand. And so as you can see, the fees associated with this run the gamut. This is fees that we collect that we pass on to other agencies. These are plan review, building review, impact fees that are associated with sewer, water, roadway, infrastructure. And so this fee estimate is roughly $238,000. And again, this is the upfront cost that would be associated with building a 14,000 square foot building on the industrial piece of property. So what we're proposing is a temporary development impact fee deferral program. And this would be a 36-month deferral of city-controlled impact fees. Those impact fees include the general government development impact fee, the traffic and circulation development impact fee, the water capacity fee, wastewater capacity fee, and storm drainage. These are typically the highest fees that are paid by developers when they construct a new building. All other fees would have to be paid upfront, and this includes fees paid to other agencies such as Measure A. We also have a few other fees that go to the state and to the feds that have to be passed through. And then all other permitting, plan review, and inspection fees related to the project that our staff work on as part of the plan review process. This would only be available to non-residential development projects. Right now, we are evaluating whether or not we can put together a similar program for residential. That would more than likely be for high-density residential, not for single-family. But we are looking at a program that we could potentially put into place if all goes well with this program. This one is kind of more important. We do have a couple of businesses that are already, you know, interested in the community. And so we want to make sure that we provide this as another option for them. This would only be available for projects whose total impact fee requirement does not exceed $2 million. And that is, typically, you get into the millions of dollars when you look at hotels. That's a really big one for sewer capacity. That's the main one that we would see kind of exceeding that $2 million mark. And then large-scale industrial warehouses or industrial users. So we're talking hundreds of thousands of square feet. Not to say that that wouldn't be something that we would consider for a fee deferral, it would just have, it would require city council approval and a separate agreement. So the way that the development impact fee deferral program would work is that we would defer the fees over a 36-month period. We would require 25% of the fees to be paid at the time of the building permit issuance. 25% of the fees would be paid 12 months following the building permit issuance, and then 25% at 24 months, and 20, the final installment would be at 36 months following building permit issuance. So this essentially would be deferred out for a total of three years. No interest would accrue on the deferral period unless somebody missed an installment payment. And so there is, in the program that's attached to the staff report, there is a notation on how the interest would be calculated. So going back to the example of the industrial building that was 14,000 square feet, in this scenario, we've highlighted the fees that would be eligible to be deferred, and it amounts to roughly $148,000. And so in this situation, the business would be required to pay $37,000 at building permit issuance and then an additional $37,000 over the next three years until that payment is For businesses or developers that would be interested in this program, they would be required to submit a program application along with a project fee estimate similar to what was just shown on the screen. That's provided by our building department. They work with our public works department to put together that fee estimate. And so that would be submitted to the community development department for review and to the public works department. The building department does put together part of the fee estimate, and then most of the capacity fees are determined, water and sewer and traffic typically are determined by the public works department. So both the community development director and the public works director would have to review this and determine eligibility. And then there is a security component that would be required, so pretty typical of security that we would require of public works type agreements that are put in place. So deed of trust with a promise to pay, an irrevocable letter of credit, a surety bond, something along those lines to guarantee that the city does not lose any component of that fee. So typically, you know, if there is default, we have that instrument in order to collect those fees. At that time, the applicant would enter into a fee deferral agreement, which would be drafted by the city attorney, and the final approval would come from the city manager. At this time, we are recommending that this be a temporary program. I, you know, working in economic development, things kind of ebb and flow and interest rates change and the situation changes for each business that, you know, as time goes on. And so right now, we're proposing to use this kind of as a pilot program. Lots of cities have fee deferral programs. Lots of cities have different types of fee deferral programs. Some charge an interest rate but put them out for, you know, five to 10 years. Some don't charge an interest rate and only will defer fees until your building permit is issued and you have your final inspection. And so we found sort of a happy medium to start with here in Galt to see how lucrative this is. We have talked to lots of businesses and lots of developers, and this is a good starting point, I think, for us. And prior to expiration within that three-year period, you know, we would evaluate the success of the program, if it's been effective, and whether or not we should recommend extension of the program or modifications to the program to make it more useful for the developer or business community. And if approved on the fiscal side, the program would result in a slight delay in the city receiving development impact fees and capacity fees on these development projects. But the short-term impact is anticipated to be offset by the program's benefits. We're really looking at job creation being kind of a big one, just investment in the community. Galt is in a really fortunate spot with the industrial side of things where most of our industrial businesses own their property and they own their business. And we, most businesses that come in to expand here in Galt are our businesses. And so it's sticker shock. When you want to build a new building and we tell you you have to pay $300,000 in fees upfront, it's mind-blowing, right? And that's typical of cities. This is not something that is abnormal in Galt. All cities, you know, they charge these development impact fees. There's a lot of state fees that come into play, county impact fees, habitat that comes into play. And so the difference is these businesses really want to own their own land. And so it's a favorable trade-off if we can help them kind of get to that finish line. And they're vested in the community. And I think that's really important. We have a lot of businesses in Galt, in the industrial area, that own and operate their own businesses, and they're vested here. They expand here. BMD is a, you know, prime example, Ellenl Wood Products. These guys own the land and they continue to expand and grow their job base. And so, you know, we see this as a benefit moving into the future to really try to attract some of those industrial users. And this would be across the board. This wouldn't be just for industrial. This would be something that we would allow for any type of commercial, non-residential development, really. So. And that concludes my presentation. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to entertain them.
Thank you. Council?
Yeah, Amy, thank you for that. A few questions. So this, this is a different program than what we did in 18, right? That was a fee waiving type thing we did. This was, this is a deferral. Or am I wrong? Is it exactly the same?
So I think in 2018, you're referring to the sewer fee credit reduction.
For the, we did for the infill vacant lot development, we tried to incentivize that kind of stuff.
That was a reduction for the traffic and park fee.
So it was.
For infill residential development. And that is something we're reevaluating right now to bring back, to determine if that is a good enough program to offer to residential development because we also are looking, I want to make sure it's all-encompassing. So if we're looking at a multifamily development, that might be something that the city is interested in seeing develop, we want to make sure that program kind of fits not only the infill projects, but also the larger-scale multifamily development that we are looking at.
So, so it's diff, so what we did in 18 with the infill was we, we had businesses that are just, we had derelict properties, more or less, or empty properties that were just not getting developed because the impact fees were too high. So we passed something that reduced those fees. This is a deferral, so it is different, okay?
And that reduction was actually only for residential. So we did a fee reduction for the traffic and park fee. And the justification was that those were infill lots, and so you weren't generating a significant amount of traffic.
Yeah.
Developing those residential infill lots. You were eliminating blight. There was some factors that played into that, but it was specifically to infill development for residential purpose.
Yeah. And I did support that because of those reasons that you said where it was, we felt like we were trying to get rid of these properties that were just kind of eyesores or just had vacant for long periods of time. I'm not really personally a fan of incentivizing residential development if you're just talking about outside of that, just, you know, sprawl, for lack of a better word. I don't think, I mean, I know that there is a major need for high density in Galt, and I think if a developer doesn't recognize that, then I don't know what to say. But I just, I mean, I always say it's quality, not quantity for me. I mean, I don't really want to bring more people here, but I want to bring more amenities and industry. So I do like what you're doing here with this, the fact that this seems like it would be something that would, you know, incentivize commercial development, hopefully industry, maybe some significant industry that could be, you know, a big job creator for Galt. I think that's what we really need. I mean, we have a lot of industrial land that's not being utilized. So I have one more question. So regarding fees, do you think, I always hear from people that our fees are high. Oh, Galt's so expensive to build in, you know. Have we ever had something presented to us that shows how Galt rates with our development fees compared to other cities and municipalities? I would love to see that at some point because I think it's, be curious.
That's a, that's a public works question.
Yeah, I figured it was.
I have done a lot of research specifically because we've had projects come through and I've been like, oh, my gosh, this is ridiculous, what's going on? Specific to some of these sewer and water capacity charges. And so I have done outreach to other cities to kind of compare. We are not out of line from that aspect. But I mean, I'm sure, and I actually think that we're working on some studies right now to revise some of our infill and development impact fees specifically. now to revise some of our infill and development impact fees specific to, I believe it's traffic is one of the big ones in terms of circulation and roadway improvements, but that's something I can definitely, you know, bring back to public works to see if we can do a comparison at some point so that you guys have an idea of what that looks like.
Okay. So, just to be clear, this, this program will be temporary. It, it's not a, it's a deferral, so it basically just helps burden, lower the burden of the upfront cost for, for a development. And it would specifically help existing, like you mentioned, BMD and L&amp;L and, you know, you know, pieces made like part of glass, even though I don't know if they've expanded, but those kinds of businesses where they're looking to expand and build additional structures, maybe bring jobs, but they're just like, ah, it's so expensive and there's so much upfront cost. So, I mean, this might go without saying, but clearly, in your position where you deal with these kinds of things, do you feel that what we're doing here and the reason this was brought to us is going to help move things along? Maybe put, maybe just get some people off the fence, you think?
Absolutely. We've been working with Bay City Electric. They are a distributor for coal or generators, and they are interested in developing in the industrial area. They've purchased a piece of property, and we've been working with them on their fee estimates specifically to try to determine the best way to kind of facilitate the development. It's, it's a lot for them upfront with the, you know, $3.8 million construction cost to add another $300,000 on top of it. And so, it allows them time to generate revenue in order to pay those development impact fees. And so, being open for a year provides a lot in terms of that, that revenue being able to come in so that they can pay that, that impact fee after that 12-month period. And so, it just gives them a little bit of leeway to, you know, to cover that. And so, this is something that we've, you know, pitched to them, and they're like, hey, we'll take anything. We would really love to have the ability to defer these fees out, you know, at least. And they were like, a year, you know, we will work with you. But, you know, I think that three years is fair. It's not excessive, and it gives them time to get their business up and running. And this is, you know, this would be a great employer for us, and, you know, we want to facilitate this and make sure that we get them to the finish line. And so, this is one of those tools. I'll also be bringing back, within the next couple of months, the sewer fee reduction. That was a program that we had in place a couple of years ago, and it was, it's an effective program, and that would really benefit them as well. It's not a huge reduction on their sewer fee, but...
I was just going to ask, and that would be for commercial and industrial, not like residential like what we did before, but, right. So, yeah. But I look forward to seeing that. And so, I do support this. I think it's great. I look forward to seeing some additional stuff maybe we can do, and I think there's nothing wrong with incentivizing because it'll end up coming back to the community anyway. So, that's all I had. Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for being us, you know, be asking this, uh, in my previous term, and this is the, look like very great program. It actually can help to the developer. It may be not help what the way they want, but it certainly can help because that impact fees is high. I know every city have impact fees, but let's, on the impact fees, I know you said is very compared to the other city, but this city, traffic fee and sewer fee that is compared to the other city means we cannot compare with Algro. Any business in Algro is much better. Their population 185, and this is a small city. That's why, as business point of view, there is very difficult to bring the business here. Every business when they come, they look at the population. They look at what's your rooftops. So, this program, you know, I support. This is a good program. The only thing I'd just like to mention, all over I like it, but one thing on the security, deed of trust means, you know, if we put the first lien on the property, development property, then that person can be hard time to his loan. So, we be kind of mindful how the way we can write down that. It's when the, his loan is done, his permit pulled down, if we do the lien after that, I think that's the success for the business. The other thing is, you know, that's 25%, 25%. That look like great, but when you have a second term, second 25% after 12 months, most of the business who are going to develop, then can finish. I know that contractor will say, okay, that project can done in nine month, but it never be nine month. You know, there is, like in weather, there's some other things. So, I, you know, I'm agree with the report, but I'm talking about instead of 25% in a 12-month, should be, that's my kind of opinion, instead of 12-month on 25, 4-month, that time the business already stable, we should be doing, instead of 25, 50%. If there is any, you know, kind of lever, like in first 25%, then after 24 months should be a 50% and then after...
The way that the program is written is that the 25% upfront would be at the building permit issuance. So, the construction's complete, the building is ready to go and to be occupied. So, they would get a certificate of occupancy. That's when they would pay the 25%. So, that's sort of like a down payment. And then, after a year, so...
Yeah, but I'm talking about after a year, when that developer can give a 25%, it's can be little bit hard for him instead of 24-month if he can, if we require a 50% because that time the business already stable, so he can start getting the, that's kind of thinking, but all over, I'm agree with that. Thank you for this report. Thank you for your hard work.
Mr. Pompano?
Yeah, I appreciate your approach here because it's targeted on things that we want. There are certain things that we certainly, you know, we don't need to incentivize residential building. But what I like about this the most and want to make sure the focus stays on, you know, one, we're lessening the, the burden of government that, you know, prohibits or inhibits development. But more importantly, this comes after you've well-established your recruitment process. So, we're not throwing this out to all comers. We're doing this at a time when we've got some things lined up and we have the people that, businesses that we want to come here. So, I'm happy to see that, and I want to see that that continues, that we, you know, continue lining up people that will be attracted by this. So, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. I was quite pleased to read the report. I think it's, you know, Galt bleeds with like $3.5 million typically to other businesses, other communities. So, this is a good way to help mitigate that problem. I think it's interesting from public comment to read that, you know, on the background, it says, "One goal of the 2021-23 City Council is to adopt strategy, strategic plan to pursue economic development opportunities to attract and retain industries and retailers to use that enhance and quality of life for Galt residents. The plan directs staff to develop initiatives to, and resources, programs to enhance businesses, attractions, and expansion efforts in Galt." And I think that's quite in line with what the Chamber of Commerce is trying to do. To the sewer, I, you know, I don't recall, Councilman Farmer mentioned our sewer reduction problem. I don't recall that, but I do remember we did that for Papa's and Wings once, and that was like $120,000, and we cut it to, I don't know, $80,000 or something like that. At least we tried to help them out. So, I don't know if that was part of the same program, but...
It was the pro, the same program.
Okay. So, yeah, that was, I could understand the sticker shock of just trying to start a small business and, you know, it's 100,000, over $100,000 before you even, you know, put your foot on anything. So, I can really appreciate this. And with all that said, I would be looking for a motion to approve.
I'm moved.
We did public, we did have a public comment on this?
We did not.
Nope, public comment. Yep.
No public comment.
Okay. So, if there's no public comment, well, I'm looking for a motion to approve. So, approved, so moved by Councilman Farmers?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Pompano. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four to zero.
And Mr. Mayor, just to comment on what you said, you're right. That building with Papa's Wing, that was like a 10-year vacant building.
I know it. And it, that was, I was really glad to see that happen. It was, that's exactly what it's, those things are supposed to do. Okay. Next is communication?
None this evening.
No communication. Next is Jay, City Clerk's Report. Subject, Galt Youth Commission Adult Mentor Appointment.
Okay. So, tonight, we are appointing a community member to the Galt Youth Commission to fill a vacant position and discuss remaining term ending December 2026. The City Clerk's Office posted the vacancies on social media and on the city's website, and an application was received from Rob, Robert King, who meets the required qualifications. Due to the recent election, Vice Mayor Sandu, Councilmember Farmer, and Councilmember Lozano each have an appointment. So, if one of you makes this appointment, that leaves two remaining vacancies, which we will continue to advertise for. So, do, I will go around the room to see if Robert King, Robert Allen King, so the first one would be Vice Mayor Sandu.
I will appoint him.
You'll appoint him. And then, as I mentioned, we will continue to advertise for the two remaining vacancies.
Mr. Mayor, is Mr. King here in the room tonight? Okay. Just thought if he was, maybe he wants to speak, but...
Thank you. And then, okay, is that all for a aye or one? And okay, and then two, is subject Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee Appointment? And was there any public comment on the last item, or is that even?
No public comment.
Thank you.
So, for Measure R, review applications and consider appointments to the vacant positions on the Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee. The Measure R Independent Oversight Committee has two vacancies appointed by the entire City Council. One with a term ending April 2023 from a recent resignation, and one with a term ending April 2024 due to an unforeseen circumstance. Two applications have been received by Glennis Nelson and Chris Brosman, both who meet the required qualifications. And accordingly, if an appointment is made to fill the vacancy for the term ending April 2023, that member will again have to reply for the upcoming vacancies that will occur in April 2023 with terms ending 2026 because their terms end in April.
Thank you. Are either of the applicants here, and would they like to speak?
Chris? Mr. Brosman?
I appreciate the opportunity to serve as a member of the university. I added a little steam out of that. And to say I look forward to participating and making sure we have a forum.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brosman, Mayor, sir, would you be interested in the 23 or the 24 appointment since you're the only one here?
Either way, Sean.
Well, since you're here, I think...
Go, go hard or go home. So, with that, there's a, we need a roll call vote for each individual or both at the same time?
If, depends on if your vote, your options are you can fill both vacancies, just the one vacancy, continue to advertise, so it all depends on what your motion is.
There's two applications, right, and two vacancies? So, I move to fill both vacancies. Do I, do I have a second?
I did have a good interview with Mrs. Nelson, and I'm glad we had two vacancies because I'm familiar with Mr. Brosman's eagle eye on the budget, and I'd be hard-pressed to pick between the two. So, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight due to a, an injury. So, I would, if it's appropriate time, move that we fill both vacancies with both Mrs. Nelson and Mr. Brosman.
I would just like to add that we would, so I would support that with Mr. Brosman being the 24 appointment and Ms. Nelson being the 2023 appointment.
Okay. Yes, she had, she had quite the impressive application. So, do I have a second?
Yes.
Seconded by Vice Mayor, first by Mayor Vandenberg. May I have a roll call vote, please?
You made the motion?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sandu?
Aye.
Councilmember Papino?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Mayor Vandenberg?
Aye. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Communication, well, nope, communication by staff?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members. Let's first go with Community Development Director Craig Hoffman.
Right, Mayor, members of the council, on Thursday at the Planning Commission, we'll be holding a workshop on Site 18 from our housing element. That was one of the sites that we needed to do a general plan amendment and rezones. We're starting the process. We'll be doing a workshop with the Planning Commission, coming back in another month with a public hearing, and should be back before the council in a few months. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Let's go with Parks and Recreation Director Armando Solis.
I just want to take time to thank Jackie and Gina, or Gina, Genesis, for their hard work over the Winterberg Festival. They did a great job this weekend with that event. Also want to thank Armando Morales for working really hard to get those fields ready for them to play today, although they weren't 100%. If they hadn't have touched them, they wouldn't have been able to play on them today. So, I just want to shout out to my guys, my maintenance guys, for doing such a great job and working hard to having a place for those people to practice today.
All right. Thank you, Director Solis. Let's go with Finance Director Matt Boring.
Good evening. I just wanted to give you an update. You added a question about warrant number 224840. That was a payment to Hub International. It was an insurance payment for events held on city facilities in December 2022, which included the lighting of the night and a private rental of the Littleton Center for a funeral. And then, just to give you a reminder that the mid-year budget presentation will be on the next council meeting, and staff is working hard to finalize our final documents for the fiscal year '22 audit, and we're planning to bring that to you the next meeting also.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Director Boring. Public Works Director Mike Selling.
Good evening, Council. Thanks, Lorenzo. Couple of things just want to make everybody aware of. We've got one of our vendors doing some work over in the gulch between Emerald Vista and the East Frontage Road, East Stockton, kind of clear that area out. It's pretty overgrown. We had some large trees fall and whatnot, and it's a choke point for the gulch drainage. So, it's basically a response to the storm. So, we got an emergency permit from the state to do that. So, if you see folks working in there, so that'll be an improvement for future storm events. And then, the other thing is, it was on social media already, but I just want to take the opportunity to make everyone aware that we have to do an annual flushing of our water lines. And so, if you see city crews out, hydrants running kind of thing, I know it looks like a waste of water. It isn't. This is required by the state, basically just to kind of clear the lines and, and prevent any potential, you know, odor, taste, or discoloration in the water. So, just kind of wanted to make folks aware of that. That's going to be ongoing for the next two months, so Monday through Friday, about 8:00 AM to 2:30 in the afternoon. So, and then, we'll, we'll have that done. So, that's all I've got. Thank you so much.
Mike, Mr. Selling, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Our, and I was going to email you about it, but I just remembered when you were talking about, do we, I, do we go out and actively fill in potholes? There's been quite a number of potholes that have kind of reared their ugly head after the storm.
Yeah.
I know, I know you guys took care of some on B Street because I saw the patches, but is that something we actively do when they come up?
Yeah. So, this time of year, there's, most of the hot mix asphalt plants are shut down kind of thing, so we use what we call cold patch. It's, just as it described, it's a cold material that they can put. It's a temporary thing. It doesn't, you know, have the adhesion and the life, if you will, depending on traffic loading. But, so you'll see our crews probably getting to that. That's kind of a little bit further down the line as far as all the, you know, the cleanup, if you will, and, and maintenance efforts, but, but that's definitely coming. And we've seen a lot of that. You get that where water is the number one enemy of roads, so it gets in the cracks, and then you start getting pieces popping out, and you get those potholes, so...
Yeah, okay.
But if there's certain locations, by...
You're probably already, yeah, I was going to say that you probably already know about this one, but there's a point, there's one about, it's huge, where, where six, or where Seventh Street intersects G Street.
Okay.
So, Seventh dead ends into G.
Mm-hmm.
There's a stop sign there. There's that old vintage house in the corner.
Right.
It's right there, the stop sign. It's massive, it's a day, so, if you guys don't already know, but thank you, Mike, for that update.
Definitely will. Yep, thank you.
Mike, alongside this asking, there is some other...
Um, Mike, alongside this asking, uh, there is some other roads, they have the same problem. Are the staff going to evaluate the whole city? Or, you know, there is some other streets, they have the same problem.
Yeah, typically, so we do, um, the city has, I think it's about eighty-three miles or so of roads, and so every couple of years, we do a full evaluation of every mile of road, uh, and we have a pavement management system software that basically, you know, is, is our database, if you will, that we use to triage, uh, road works. So, uh, whether it's potholes, or what needs to be overlaid, and, and obviously, it's always a funding, you know, uh, challenge, so, uh, it is a triage effort, but yeah. But if there are specific locations or something people see, by all means, let us know. I mean, I love hearing from the constituents, your eyes and ears out there, because we can't be everywhere at all times, so it, it definitely is appreciated and helps us, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, Director Selling. Let's go with Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez.
Evening again. I just wanted to briefly, um, give you guys an update on, um, the retail survey that we put out back in December. There was an online survey that, um, was launched basically in conjunction with our retail consultant that we're working with, so Retail Coach, um, we've been working really closely with. There is a trade show at the end of the month, so at the end of February, I will be in Monterey for the International Council of Shopping Centers Trade Show. That's sort of the largest retail trade show, um, for the region, and so lots of retailers and, um, commercial brokers that will be there. And so when we did the, um, survey in December, that was intentional, because we wanted to make sure we had some feedback from the community on retailers and restaurants, um, that we could set up appointments with in, um, in February at the trade show. And so the survey results are in. We had, um, eight hundred, seven hundred and ninety-nine responses. Um, folks are really passionate about the, uh, retail and restaurants they would like to see in this town. So I am working on a retail graphic, sort of outlining, um, those top vote-getters for the retail and the restaurants, and I will be posting that on social media this week. Um, also, we're using that information to schedule meetings in Monterey. So I had, I had a call today with the consultant, and they have, um, meetings scheduled already, a handful of them, for the first day that we're there. So, um, exciting stuff. I think that, um, it's really, there's been some good feedback so far from the appointments that they've, retailers they've reached out to, and so I think that, um, you know, this was a great investment for the city, and, uh, I will report back after our show. It's February twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth in Monterey. So when I come back in March, I'll report back on who we met with and kind of the response that we're getting from the retail community, so. That's all I have for the night.
Thank you. Police Chief Brian Kalinowski.
You couldn't find anybody else to call on. So, uh, Mayor and council members, um, some updates. Uh, so next Thursday, two PM at Littleton, we'll have our department award ceremony. Some members of council have been invited and asked RSVP. Again, that's next Thursday, January sixteenth at two PM. On January twenty-fifth, we'll be having another installment of Coffee with the Cop. It'll be at the coffee shop on Fourth Street at nine AM. I believe that's the time we settled on. More information will become forthcoming on social media and other venues for that. So we look forward to that opportunity. Again, that's going to be on January twenty-fifth. That's a Saturday. Um, and then two items I wanted to touch base on, because it came up in public comment, and so it starts to, I want to make sure that we're all speaking from the same language here. We've been working on the animal control, uh, issue since October of last year. Um, it was set to go on the December twenty-first council meeting. The county asked us to continue it. They were not ready. It was set to go January seventeenth. They asked us to continue it. They were not ready. It was set to go tonight. They asked us to continue it. They were not ready. If I get the contract tomorrow, it'll go on the February twenty-first agenda. If I don't receive it tomorrow, it'll go on the March seventh agenda. The city attorney is involved with me in helping shepherd that process forward. It's not a lack of effort. It's more a lot of red tape that happens on the county side about getting things agendized, and, uh, the pace is a little different than it is here. So, um, the only option is to go with the county. We've explored all options in that process, and so that's what you will see. Ninety-five percent of my work is already done, and the good city clerk is, and Rose have helped me moving that agenda item in the system every single time we've had that continuation. So I want folks to know that that's ongoing, and we're ready to roll on that, as I explained to the mayor in a recent meeting. Also, we continue to work on the homelessness issues. I know the city manager's, um, dealing with that globally. The department is, um, um, continues to be involved. I know there's some pending information requests that we've requested. I've told the city, uh, manager that I need time on that, because there's more analysis that needs to be done, and it's, we, uh, the way we do our calls, uh, we have to actually dig within the calls to figure out what's homeless-related and not, unless it's a report. So we're doing some work on that, and as soon as my staff is back next week, my key staff that are working on this, will have some more movement, so hopefully I can get that information to you. So that's all we have at this point, um, unless there's any questions.
Uh, Chief, I have just, uh, one question. Uh, the public comment, they said dead animal. I, last time I heard, uh, if they, the city didn't see any dead animal, they called to police department, and then I heard it's not been taken care of that, uh, I, I, I'm talking, you might be?
Yeah, so if, if you, if somebody comes across any animal that is deceased, uh, in the city limits, um, they contact three-six-six-seven-thousand. That's a non-emergency number for dispatch, and get that call in. Uh, depending on the size of the animal, the call will be referred to Cow Waste, who does that pickup on our behalf, up to a certain size. Uh, and this happens, uh, rarely ever, but if it was a large animal, like a horse or a cow or something like that, um, the, the group in Sacramento would come down and remove the animal. So there should not be a situation where an issue is reported that, um, that does not get addressed. Now, could something happen on a Sunday morning and not get taken care of till Monday or Monday afternoon? That's very possible, but we have a process in place to do the reporting, and it should be a seamless transaction.
And the other thing, what's your, how many calls maybe average we getting this kind of, uh, dead animals? Have you, have you anything aware of that?
I can pull that information for you, but I don't.
Yeah, that's okay. It'll be later on.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for addressing those items directly, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. And, and just to be clear, for those, maybe they're watching at home, it's the non-emergency PD number, and then Cow Waste has been tasked with that. I, I was, this made me think of something, Mr. Heinz. Would it be possible, and it's not, it's not urgent, but just, just for the public to know and for us to know, I was thinking, maybe at some point in the future, you know, over the next few months or whatever, because I know it would maybe, you know, takes a little research to look into, but, and it doesn't have to be like a precise number, but I would be curious to know that if any point in the future that Galt was to ever look at, what would the cost be to have our own animal services in, in the city? Like, you know, whether we reuse an existing building, what would it cost to staff it? Because I think it would be important to public to know, if we came and said, you know, it take, it's going to take one-point-five million per year, or mil- or whatever, that at least people understand that, what it would take and the challenges. And then the council could keep that in their mind, maybe for future, uh, you know, down the road, we can, maybe if, you know, we ever come in a windfall of money, or we have money that we'd like to, you, we, we always have that in our mind, if that's something we ever wanted to do.
And we can, and we can broach that topic, uh, at a higher level when we do the presentation with, um, Animal Control, who will be present with us from SAC County, on the agenda that we get it on.
I would just be curious, because as Galt grows, I mean, maybe we're not ready to have that now, but I don't know, just.
Maybe, yes, it's, yes. Self, self-run programs are very, um, expensive, as you alluded to, so.
And I'm going to throw in the, we probably need to move on from this topic, just because it's not fully agendized, but, um, but I think that's enough for now.
Well, I could, I guess I could, I could have, sorry, I could have waited and brought it up under future agenda items, but, thanks.
And I got you covered on our agenda item anyway, so you're good. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Um, City Clerk Hubert?
And nothing further.
City Attorney Frank Splendario? All righty. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I, there's a couple of things I wanted to say. Um, uh, first of all, we met with the owners of the Save Mart Shopping Center, uh, last week to discuss various issues, which were driven by tenant complaints, law enforcement, or code enforcement activities. Um, the managers of the Save Mart Shopping Center, uh, have agreed to meet with me twice a month to, uh, discuss their progress in addressing outstanding issues, and the new manager of the Save Mart Grocery will also be meeting, um, us as well, meeting with us as well as a group, so we can discuss the issues, um, in that particular, uh, shopping center. And of course, Economic Development Manager Amy Mendez and other key staff will be part of that meeting as well. We also met with the owners of Galt Place, uh, to begin establishing a relationship with them, and to discuss some issues, um, affecting Galt Place, and just, uh, to get an understanding of, uh, uh, some of the issues that, um, they've, they're dealing with down there. We have a local state of emergency that was declared in early January of two thousand twenty-three. It's set to expire during the second week of February. Uh, we have the option to extend it, um, but at this point in time, I don't see the need to do so, therefore, I intend to let it expire. And that's all for staff comments.
Thank you, sir. Uh, with that, we move on to comments by city council members, uh, members slash future agenda items. Vice Mayor Sandu?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, giving me the opportunity. Uh, first of all, uh, thank you for the staff giving us a report. Thank you especially. Thank you for Ms. Mendez. She bring that, uh, uh, deferment program. Uh, I also, uh, attend couple events in this town. I attend the Galt Lion Club fundraising. There was a great turnout. The Lion Club does a lot of our community. I want to say thank you to them, and all that they do. I also attend the wine, beer, and food event. It hosted by Galt Chamber, another well-attended event with lot of great local, and thank you for the Chamber. And I also like to thank you, uh, for the comment tonight. Uh, comments, uh, public comments is also, uh, my heart, because these public, when I go each door, I make a promise with them. I will listen their comment very carefully, and then will be taking action what is necessary to take. Uh, tonight, uh, there is a couple comment is really I have a concern. Uh, the one comment uh, is by the Chamber. Uh, it is against, uh, city manager, communication and behavior. I was not in the meeting. I like to find out what happened. I don't know, Mr. Heinz, he call any, uh, council member, he get communicating. I have no one involved that, but I just need to know. And we are, as a council, especially city manager, we are the highest person in happy integrity to have experience, how we handle the meeting, how we handle the personal behavior. Uh, if Mr. Heinz, uh, uh, if, if you cannot answer this, uh, right now, then, uh, we can, uh, later on, or if city attorney, maybe another way, as I personally, I don't know what the other council member, we need to know what happened on that meeting. Uh, the second concern with the, the comment made by, there is three organization in this town, for the baseball, for the softball, and I personally do understand G Y B is a big organization. And the other two organizations also part of the city too. So I like to, uh, same thing, there was a meeting today, Mr. Heinz sent us, uh, the report, and I like to make more communication, see if everybody can fit on that. And there is some field, uh, they don't have the lights. I like to we get the lights if they can help. And there is some, uh, field, I can, I heard, uh, the high school, they using our city, a park. We should ask as a city if we can use there. Especially there is a meeting, I think, uh, Mr. Farmer, you are part of that? Yeah, a cast meeting, uh, if something, uh, they can help us, because these kids are our future. And it is, is, is my concern, then their parents come down and they said they have to play their kids from eight to ten, and we all know that. We always tell to the kids, go to where you need to go to school in the morning. But I'm asking, do the best we can do, and that's our focus. And, uh, that's, uh, that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Papino?
Yeah, I appreciate the vigorous, uh, public comment and input, um, regarding the clarification that the chief gave us on the, uh, animal services. Might be appropriate for the appropriate staff to contact the commenters, who are all gone now, with the exception of one, and let them know, uh, you know, what we've been up against, um, and that, you know, it is being worked on. Uh, we knew it. We didn't communicate it, uh, well enough. Uh, secondly, with our focus on the homeless problem, I won't be able to attend, but, uh, Mark Jackson and the Saint Martin Foundation will be having a, uh, spaghetti and bingo night fundraiser the eighteenth. I'll be busy marrying off my youngest, but, um, this organization focuses on transitional housing, and that's, uh, obviously one part of, uh, remedying the homeless problem, at least for those who wish to, uh, transition. So, um, I have it from Mr. Jackson, that, um, most of, or if not all of, the rest of the council will be there. Um, so I'm glad to see it. Uh, spread the word. Like to see a good turnout, and, uh, and give him a boost, uh, getting moving with that. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Farmer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, congrats to you on your, on your youngest daughter. I have three, and I haven't married any mine off yet, so I don't know if that's, that's what we call the, uh, payment deferral program? It's like, is it a father of the bride supposed to pay for that? Yeah. So, um, uh, yeah, I just, um, thank you, Chief, for the update for the animal services. Um, it's frustrating that, you know, that some things are out of our power, and, uh, I would appreciate, too, the, the people that did speak earlier tonight that are not here could, could, um, maybe be emailed. Um, you know, regarding the, uh, I did also attend the, uh, Wine Beer and Food Festival that Chamber put on, very well attended. Lions Crab Feed, very well attended. Two great events. Um, you know, everybody was there. It's, was, was fantastic time, so thank you to both those organizations for that. Um, just to touch, just briefly on the baseball topic, um, I think what this has showed us, and this is a conversation that I had with Mr. Heinz and, and, uh, our Parks and Rec Director, is that, you know, sadly, um, the city has grown over the last couple decades, and mainly because of money, which we all know the Parks and Rec money issues, but also maybe a little bit of lack of foresight, that, you know, administrations over the last couple decades, councils, and again, you know, probably had maybe good reason, or maybe they didn't, have just really not kept pace. As we've grown as a city, we get more families, we get more children. We are a big sports, um, city, because there's not much else to do. And so as these programs have grown, and I was, as I was meeting with some of these organizations over the last few days, you know, some of these numbers are staggering. You know, we have a thousand, something like a thousand kids that play county line soccer. That's just one organization. We have something like three hundred baseball players at G Y B. That's the largest they've had. Um, and we just don't have the facilities, clearly, by all the comments tonight. We don't, we are way behind on the proper facilities, and unfortunately, you know, whatever becomes of what we're working on now with these groups, um, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to be a silver bullet. Um, some of these issues are going to have to be dealt with over the long term, but I am happy to, to think that we've done a lot of things to try to do that. Um, you know, Measure Q is going to be very pivotal on that. I would like to see, you know, because it is earmarked for Parks and Rec, maybe it, once we, you know, start getting up past the housekeeping that, of urgency, of some other, uh, really important things, we can start focusing on some sports facilities or something. You know, this is not something that's going to happen in the near future, but, um, but I think it's definitely possible, and I think there's also, um, you know, Walker Park we're working on. So I feel like we have a goal, and we just need to work towards that, but I'm glad to, at least after all this time, we can start working towards remedying this. But I just ask that these groups, you know, regardless of what comes out of this, this, uh, discussions now, um, that you just be mindful that we do have a, a plan, um, you know, long-term, so. Um, but thank you to all those organizations. Um, I know you guys are out there volunteering. I know what that's like. I've done it, so thank you for that. Um, and, um, I just want to thank the, I actually want to thank the PD for, uh, you know, we've had a rash of vandalism lately with some businesses. I've been hearing from those business owners, and I've reached out to those business owners and expressed my, you know, frustration on that, and I know that PD is working hard to, to, uh, make that a priority, so thank you, PD, for that. So thank you, PD, for that because it is frustrating, you know, you're a small business and you get a window for a thousand bucks broken and it really hurts. So and then just, you know, about the people that spoke tonight, I just want to say thank you for all the public comment, you know, it's not easy hearing public comment, you know, we're up here, we represent the people, you know, it's hard to hear some of these things and and but regardless of what the topic is, you know, I want to say it is important to have input from the citizens. I really like hearing from the citizens. I like people being engaged in their in the in this process. We represent you. We work for you. The staff, they work for you. They work for the citizens. This is, this is a city meeting. This is not really a, this is a, this is a citizen meeting. This is not really a city meeting. This is your meeting and we embrace people coming and and people like yourselves being involved in that process. And if we're going to properly enact policies and make decisions on your behalf, we need to know about them. And although I'm pretty heavily involved monitoring Facebook, you know, social media is not always the right place. We need to have people engaged in this process and come to these meetings and be involved, even if it's just to listen. I think all of you, I think many of you have maybe come to speak or just whatever. And then I think maybe you're like, wow, that other subject we talked about was very interesting tonight. I didn't know. And I think you learned something and you'd be surprised at what you can learn. I know some of it's boring, but I think it's important. So thank you again to everybody who spoke tonight. And lastly, just the one last thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to ask, when, I would like to ask Mr. City Manager, when will our staff be returning to our council meetings? Because I know this is something we we transitioned to for COVID, but I just think, and I know that they're watching in the other room and I get that, but it's just, it's not the same without having the staff here and having, when people speak, that the staff are here and be able to, there's something about being able to look people in the eye and 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 having the public see these these people that that their tax money pays for in the same room. So I would like to see us return to the normal meetings at some point, so.
I would, I would very much support that. And to that effect, you know, when people are speaking to you eyeball to eyeball, it's a lot different than if they're in another room. So if the topic directly addresses other individuals of staff, I think it's important that they're in the room. I know we we did some of this because of emergencies and that sort of thing, so we're not going to, you know, go any farther than that. But I just simply wanted to say that, you know, I support Mr. Farmer and maybe perhaps someone else does.
Yeah, I will support that too because noise normal.
Do you have more, sir? Go ahead. That's all I have.
Under that agenda item, just to be clear, that's just you a future agenda item request?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So with that, I'm very pleased to see all of the public comment, even though it's actually one of the hardest things for me to do, to sit here and hear people complain about, rightly so, about the things going on in the city, whether it's my fault or not and not being able to respond to them. It's difficult. It's it's frustrating. I agree a lot of what my fellow council members said, you know, St. Martin Foundation is is an excellent thing. People complain about homeless and it's very nice to see someone in our community stepping up to do something that actually takes people off of the street and gives them an opportunity when they choose to. So, you know, it's a lot like Mr. Bozeman there got hooked into, he started coming to the meetings, did academy, now he's hooked in, plugged into the city, going to make a difference. So that's, that's a great thing. As far as the chambers comments, you know, I would, it's a little longer term than the baseball item, but I would, if there's going to be a meeting, and I don't know if this requires an ad hoc or legal, but I would want support from my fellow council members, I guess, that myself or mayor, Vice Mayor Sandu is in the meetings. I do want, I do not want to get into a he said, she said on any meeting I wasn't involved in, so I would think would be prudent to do so.
Yeah, like so under this part of the agenda, we can only really request future agenda items. We can't take any action or direction on anything else. So, you know, if you want to have a discussion about having the discussions, you can do that and make that part of our future agenda.
Okay, I would like to make, I would ask for support then from my fellow council members to make that an agenda item.
Do we have to make an agenda? Can't we just give direction?
It's, there's nothing on the agenda about anything related to the chamber, this this item. That's my only concern.
I would support that. I would, I would think this is something that he was the mayor could ask the city manager offline if.
I did, and here we are without it. So I'm just going to make it public, you know, I, I express my disconcert, my dislike for the delay. Doesn't matter, you know, I did express my dislike. I forwarded emails. I was honest and yet polite. I don't like, what I don't like mostly about the baseball is that it's not happening fast enough because the kids are already practicing. So as far as that goes, you know, that's next. So but as far as the chamber, I just, I don't want to be, I don't want to be contentious where it's not necessary. So if that could be an agenda item and to help address it and move it forward in a proper etiquette manner, so to speak, we'll just make that an agenda item and leave it there. As far as the baseball goes, I would actually like to have an emergency meeting. I know they, everybody talks about not having, playing, not being able to play on Fridays because they they practice on or play on Saturdays, sorry, lost in some other thought there. So I'd like to actually address that as soon as possible. It can't, I don't feel like it's can be something that can be delayed for another two weeks and then we make a decision and then we write a document and then we decide and in a month from now we are finally to a point of we've made a decision for the kids. I really like what Vice Mayor said about, you know, dovetailing the schools into if they have grass and they have fields, somehow finding a way of making an agreement to use them. I expressed to the city manager, you know, the ideas of using other parks that for, excuse me, for younger children, they don't necessarily need the full size of the dirt. They're just trying to figure out and learn and play and have fun, something that they can grow a passion for. I also mentioned, and he was already working on doing things with Walker Park, you know, but that's at best a year out, even if you were to start as soon as possible. So I would like to see that. I don't know how your, my fellow council members feel, but I'd like to see that addressed, you know, within a week.
How would you like this meeting structured? How would you like me to write the staff report? Is council interested in terminating the G Y B agreement?
No, I, I feel like there's been some movement on the fields access, what people said they needed, but then, you know, it didn't work out quite that way. I don't want to come back to another meeting and then have stuff and, you know, I feel, I got the impression, I'll just put it that way, that things are pretty close to resolved.
Yeah.
Public comment did not express that feeling to me at all.
We were surprised.
If we are all in the same room and we discuss it, there's, there's no he said, she said, so to speak, and we could hammer it out, you know? I know we need some time to understand the schedules, the volumes. There's not just baseball that has been discussed this evening, but there's also league soccer and then there's limited fields. I understand all of that, but, you know, having little kids playing at nine, 10 o'clock at night, you know, going to bed and then expect them to be A students is is not my idea of great parenting.
I would just want to add, I think the problem with a meeting, and I do appreciate the effort to get a meeting, I know it appeared like it was trying to thwart off comment tonight, but I, you know, I did express in my meeting that there'd be a meeting ASAP, which they did. But I think the problem is it's just too last minute. I mean, it's at 3 o'clock. I mean, people have jobs. Obviously, one of the biggest players, or actually the biggest player, which would be G Y B, wasn't even present at the meeting. So for me, the meeting was for not, for not. I mean, I, I did express to the city manager that I think, you know, I didn't persist on it, but I said I would prefer that there be council representation in there, but I said I would be open to either. But I think if there was a council member present, you know, maybe someone like Council Mozzano or myself or you, mayor, it doesn't matter who.
No, you guys are more, you guys are more engrossed into baseball, so that would be appropriate.
Just so that I think that there's not a, he said, there's more of a, I don't know.
Exactly.
So we, that sounds good. So this is getting, I appreciate the IDAing on the fly, but again, I have to.
Well, the city manager asked us what he would like, asked us what he, we're instructing him to do, so we're just stating.
No, and I'm not, this isn't pointed to anyone in particular. I just, the conversation overall, we have to stick to a future agenda item request. So my thought is, we can create a, have a discussion to maybe form an ad hoc, literally on the fly, or perhaps a council member or two can talk to the city manager offline about joining those meetings. If, 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 if it can't, if it can't be done offline, then we'd have to have a discussion at the D I S. We can't form an ad hoc though, right now, is kind of what I'm saying.
So that was.
If we have a consent at something, can we make a direction or no?
You can give, you, yeah, you can always kind of give direction.
This is kind of direction, I think, in meeting and especially you heard tonight, what kind of comment, it just seems like both side, why, why we have to go to this agenda.
The, the discussion on G Y B wasn't on the agenda tonight. So if council wants to get into discussion about strategies for getting that thing across the finish line, whether there's an ad hoc of the council, those are all good discussions. But right now, the part of the agenda is for future agenda items. So that's all I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to be obstreperous or throw wrench in this. I'm just trying to do, you know, make it clear what we can do. Now, that's not to say a conversation can't be had offline, where a council member or two can try to, you know, to work that, but if we're going to have a council discussion, it has to be on the agenda. And the only agenda item right now is for future agenda items. That's all I'm simply trying to say.
Can I try to offer a solution? Clearly, the process is going to keep moving forward, the discussion between the three organizations, Director Solis and the city manager. That goes without saying that's going to happen. If they get to the next meeting and we don't have a solution, then I would suggest an agenda item to discuss forming an ad hoc committee.
I would, I would just, I would like to see, Mr. Mayor, if you could pursue this offline. The problem is if we wait for that, which, by the way, I don't believe there is a meeting scheduled, another meeting, so there's that. And if we wait till the next meeting to form an ad hoc and then that gets formed, by the time that, the season's half over, it's pointless.
That's what I was talking about is that the process can continue offline as it's going now, but at least we can have on the agenda, worst case scenario, we can look at at our next regular meeting, forming an ad hoc committee. I have every faith that it will be solved by then.
Okay, then I will make myself available as needed. I'll work with my, my regular job as best as I can. If you could make an appointment ASAP and I will do everything I can to be there and.
Mr. Mayor, if you can't make it, I would totally be, but I just think we need council representation, so.
Okay, great. I just want to move it forward as fast as possible. Okay, so that's clear as mud. All right, thank you, everybody. You know, again, I really appreciate everybody's hard work. It's not always easy. The city went through some horrendous rain and storms. You know, that brings to mind, I drive over Lower Sacramento Bridge, there's five, seven easily visible trees that are completely fallen over. I realize that's probably not in the Galt City limits, but I'm wondering if staff has heard anything or can look into who may clean that up because that is, we've had multiple fires there in the past three years. I think we've had four or five fires and it's prime for a large fire with that much dead foliage resting where people tend to stay out of trouble or try to anyway. So with that, I will end the meeting at 8:48 PM. Thank you.